Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Protem, and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and thank you for being here. Welcome to the July 30th council work session. Any month that has five Tuesdays in it, we reserve the last for a work session so that council can dive a little deeper into some of the issues that we're facing on a regular basis. We do typically run a consent agenda. We'll wait till we get a quorum here to bring that up. But we will start like we always do, and that is by asking God's blessing on our proceedings. Our pastor's not here. I'm going to ask Counselor Gary Allen to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Join me in prayer. God, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We come to you now asking your guidance as we deliberate the business of the city or the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. We ask you to bless all those who are present and their families. Continue to watch over us as we do the work of the city. Thank you again for all you do for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And to lead us in our pledge, we've got some pretty amazing young people from Columbus Parks and Recreation Summer Camp. I'm going to ask them to come forward. I understand they've been sitting in my chair, too. I'm not sure about that. Y'all come on up and get the microphone and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. All right, y'all, if you would, while you've got the microphone, turn around, face the audience, and tell us your name. And if you want to, tell us what grade you're going into this year.
My name is Bria Barnes, and I'm going to 3rd grade.
My name is Maria Walker, and I'm going to the 4th grade.
My name is Alani Williams, and I'm going to the 3rd grade.
My name is Noah, and I'm going to 2nd grade.
My name is Connor, and I'm going to 1st grade.
My name's Mira, and I'm going to 3rd grade.
My name is Lyia, and I'm going to 3rd grade.
My name is Riley, and I'm going to the 3rd grade.
My name's Strohsoven, and I'm going to 1st grade.
My name's Chandler, and I'm going to 1st grade.
Well, terrific. Y'all did a really good job. Who are the ladies with her? Introduce yourselves. You don't have to say what grade you're going into. Take the microphone, tell us who you are.
My name is Sabbath Mohammed, and I am a site activity director for Parks and Rec.
My name is Valencia Carson, and I also work for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, ladies. Our Parks and Recreation Department does so much more than just facilitate athletics, and this is another terrific example. And we're so grateful y'all were here, so hopefully y'all come back and do it again sometime. Thank you. All right. We do have a quorum, so during our work session, as I said, we do have what we call a consent agenda there. Relatively low in controversy, so I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney. Whoop, try again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items to vote on this morning. First one up, would amend Chapter 3 of the city code related to alcoholic beverages for the licensing of bottle shops, on-premises, off-premises sales. It's ready for a vote.
Motion second to approve.
Bruce, any discussion on this item? If you would, please, any votes.
The next item, Mayor, is the moratorium on the use of shared electronic scooters during which time there'll be a trial run of scooters in downtown Columbus. It's ready for a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
We've got a couple of counselors. Counselor Davis?
I yield to Counselor Thomas.
Okay. I'll come back to you.
My question is just, for the test programs, will those have to come back to us for approval to run a test program, or does this allow it without further authorization from the council?
Counselor Thomas, our intention is to bring back to a memorandum of understanding between us and the Lime group that wants to do the trial. We wanted to try to do that on August 13th, but this does not, this action does not approve that or disapprove any of the trial period this time.
They still have to come back to council?
Yes, ma'am. They still have to come back to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. Mayor, I do, I don't know if there was some conversation last week or not, but I personally have some concerns about the matter. I'm not anti-scooter or anything like that, but I think that if we're going to implement a period, well, this is, I guess we're calling a moratorium, but it's more like a trial period. If we're going to do that, my question would be, do we have some minimal regulations that can help during this period, or we're just going to turn everybody loose and it's a free-for-all? So that's my concern right now, and I don't know. I don't know, for example, age. Can anybody ride the scooters? Are they going to ride on the sidewalks, on the road, on the crosswalks? We just had some serious incidents in the Uptown area dealing with crosswalks. Are cleanup matters and all? Who's going to be responsible for those kind of things? And helmets for safety purposes and all? I mean, we're reading in the headlines every day about matters happening dealing with these scooters. So I'm just asking, are there any minimal regulations during this period, or is it just, let's see how this works, and let's see what happens?
Counselor Davis, the way the MOU is being structured now, it does address things like you cannot ride on the sidewalks. You have to be a certain age to actually ride to have the operation capability for that scooter. Lime has, there's no real requirement for helmets, but Lime is working toward an educational component, and so they've told me anyway, that they will encourage and maybe provide helmets to riders in the area itself. As we discussed, I think last time also, was the fact that we were going to limit about where these scooters could actually ride. We're in the midst now of putting that map together and finalizing and making sure that Lime understands that these are certain areas they can ride, and only these certain areas. And then again, this would be for a 90-day period, test period, really, to see how this actually works. Does it really make sense to do this, does it not? What kind of problems we're going to have? I think that's what we're trying to achieve here with the trial period, rather than just saying, just blanket prohibit them all over. I think we need at least give it some kind of option here in terms of seeing what it could do or couldn't do for the community. And Lime understands that as well.
Well, just so everybody knows, I think I stated earlier, I'm still a little uncomfortable with this. I think all this stuff needs to be worked out on the front end. When I hear you say it makes me uncomfortable, that it's a work in progress. Meanwhile, the scooters are out there in operation and no telling what could happen. So I think those are things that need to be worked on. We're learning from other cities, what's taking place, what's happening. Again, I said, I'm not against scooters and all, and I think it could be a great thing, but I think you need to spell it out real clear in how we're going to do this. We don't have the extra services to handle a lot of cleanup or incidents or things like that that might happen. I mean, I'd like to know who's going to be in charge of all this stuff when that happens. Is Uptown going to take the responsibility? Is Public Services, Public Safety? Who's going to take the responsibility in all this? Or are we just, you know, creating more headaches for our services that we say we can't provide, or we're struggling making it work today? Let's just put it that way.
Counselor Davis, I'll try to give you as much assurance as I possibly can, but when we bring the MOU back to you on August 13th, we hope to spell out a lot of those things so everybody understands exactly what we're trying to achieve here.
Tell all, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I had similar questions to Counselor Davis. I guess if you could, when you come back, talk about the policing of the MOU, who would be charged with that? I would hope it would be Uptown with their folks. And then also, limit the number of scooters being used. I would like to see, I don't want 300 downtown running around. But anyway, that's just me. I'm sure you'll educate us on that aspect of it when you come back. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I'd also like to see the area expanded to maybe the bike trail between the two campuses. I'd like that to be explored. And it's my understanding, when I spoke with Clifton about this moratorium, that the reason why we're having the moratorium is so that it doesn't get out of hand, so that we're just working with one company and creating the MOU and we're not allowing other companies. So I feel like this ordinance is kind of preventing some of the things that we're afraid of, or at least giving us an opportunity to work within some boundaries so that it doesn't get out of hand. So I think this is kind of a responsible ordinance.
And you're right. I think what this moratorium does, it keeps people from just coming in from another company and dumping scooters downtown and letting them go, which they have done in other communities. This way, we basically deny access to any scooter companies except for the one if we decide to go forward with a test period. Counselor Thomas?
I would also assume that if counselors have suggestions or concerns about what to allow, that they need to get it to you in the next week or so?
Yes, ma'am.
For example, I think we need to make a distinction, and Counselor Allen spoke about the 300 bikes. If you tell a company they can have 300 bikes, does that mean a total of 300 bikes? Or does that mean 300 bikes on the street? And in order to have 300 bikes on the street, we need 400 bikes, you know, that sort of thing? So I'm assuming that we need to get that to you fairly quickly if there are issues that we are, as counselors, concerned about.
Yes, ma'am. That would be appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Doesn't appear to be any more questions. Is there a motion to approve the moratorium? We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Counselor Davis?
Again, I'd like to see the moratorium. Before I vote on anything, make a decision, I'd like to see what all the regulations are going to be as far as the MOU. I don't have that, and I'm not ready to make a decision on this until I'm able to review it. Thank you.
And since we don't have a full body of the council here, it may be, I don't know what harm it would do, would it do any harm to delay this till the next meeting on the 13th?
The only harm I can see with Mr. Mayor is, and I don't know this is going to happen, but somebody could walk in here, satchen in, and say, "I want a building, I want a business license. I want to put scooters in there," and we don't have any way of stopping them.
And that is the concern that we have, the immediate concern, Mr. Mayor. And if other counselors come in, they may be supportive of the ordinance and bring it back later. Do understand Counselor Davis is concerned, but without this ordinance, if they decide to come and dump 1,000 tomorrow, you can't stop them. And that's irresponsible, in my opinion.
I think that the moratorium, the goal of that is just to make sure nobody does put them until we have some control over it. The moratorium is to give us control over a shorter period of time. But I understand. Counselor Davis?
Well, again, in lack of conversation and detailed conversation on this matter, what I'm understanding is a moratorium to do business with one company. So the way I understand is that you're opening the door to do business with the one company, and it's a moratorium on everyone else. Or am I reading that wrong? It's a moratorium on 100, you're not doing any business for 180 days in order to get these regulations worked out. What are we doing here?
City Attorney, why don't you answer that from a legal perspective?
Yeah, what this 180-day moratorium would do, maintain the status quo, would nobody been able to come in and get a business license for any number of scooters on the streets and allow this council to look at, in this case, one trial period with one company with a certain number of scooters in a certain area, and decide whether you want to allow these things in the future in a certain area of Columbus, or, as some cities have done, ban them altogether. This will just maintain the status quo where nobody can come in next week and file an application to get a license.
And I think the moratorium allows us, if we do a deeper dive and we decide, man, there's too many people bailing on this, and it's just not something we want, then we can use that moratorium to craft a ban.
When does the city turn on the switch and provide a business permit to start operating?
Not till council approves.
And that is with the... Well, that's what I'm getting at. There's a second step to this that's coming to this council. Yes, okay, all right. And I'm just saying, we could have three or four companies descend on Columbus between now and two weeks, and we realize that there's nothing on the books. The police could not go and cite them.
We couldn't deny them a license either.
Yeah, we couldn't deny them a license because, you know, it's not regulated.
It just allows us to control it.
Yeah. Well, I know I can live with that if it's coming back on another decision as far as a business permit.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
It would seem that perhaps if we accept the 180-day moratorium today, Mr. City Manager, I don't know, maybe we need to slow down the test period instead of doing that and have some conversation about some of the kinds of things that we would want to see in the test period itself. Go ahead and approve the mor... This ordinance would allow us to approve the moratorium, and it says that, except for test programs authorized by council. So we don't have to do a test program August 13th. It could be September 13th, or December 13th, or whatever. As long as it's in, that moratorium is there in place, nobody can do anything yet. So I would suggest that we support this ordinance and support this moratorium and suggest that the city manager and the planning department slow down a little bit.
Well, and I don't...
On the test program.
And I absolutely, I don't have any issue with that in staff, no. And even Uptown, I think they said it when they were here, that, you know, it wasn't something I've been around to, various cities, from Denver to Atlanta to Cada, and, you know, I am not, was not a proponent of scooters. And I told them, I don't want them in Columbus. But when they did the demonstration, I felt like we need to have some rules and make sure they all cannot just descend on us like they've done other cities. And I felt like, because of millennials and what they like, we ought to at least test it and give it a try. But I think he said, and they know that scooters was not, and still is not, I'm not convinced it's something I want to do, but it deserves, if we are going to be a city that, you know, sensitive to millennials and what they want, we ought to at least try it.
I think that we, that our goal is that we get it right.
That's right.
Either we allow it and get it right, or we disallow it and get it right. So that would be my suggestion, is that we approve the moratorium and slow down the test period.
That sounds good.
There is a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Bruce, would you cue it? Counselors, you can enter your votes, please. The moratorium passes.
All right. That passes, and then planning will come back, as Mr. Jones said, after input and consideration from counselors and other studies. And there's no timetable on that, no rush on it. But that's all we have listed for today, Mayor.
Okay. And we'll move into the work session before we... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. And as we go, before we get into the work session, I wanted to make a very quick announcement to council and to the public. Council wisely and courageously left money in the budget to make a significant move forward on removing dilapidated housing. And some of the biggest targets that we had noticed were some of these burned-out trailer parks. So to celebrate with the community, as we initiate this, we are going to have a very short, very informal press conference at 4325 Old Casita Road tomorrow at 9:00. And it just gives us an opportunity to kind of kick this initiative off, and hopefully y'all can make it, and the other counselors can, because it's due to your efforts that this is going to be undertaken.
Give the address.
It's 4325 Old Casita Road. And you should have received a copy of the press announcement. So check your email. If you didn't, we'll resend it today. I just want to make sure that council, if they're able, can attend. We'll have some of the neighbors out there. I know one of the churches that's been active in that area will be there as well. More good news for Columbus, Georgia. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Got seven items on the agenda. Some of them are, should be very brief. Mayor, we knew that you had another engagement, so we tried to put some light stuff on first, give you a chance to make it back. But Engineering Director Donna Newman is going to give an update on Levy Road closure, and then she's going to do a short update on 13th Street. And so we have our Engineering Director, Donna Newman, with us this morning.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Very short update on Levy Road. As some of you counselors may remember, I know we have some new ones. In 2017, we began discussions and working with the owner of Gus's Drive-In. They were looking toward closure of the business and had an interesting party at their, for their particular location at that time. During that discussion, it was discovered that a portion of Levy Road was actually on their property, not on by the city. So the discussions began about potential closure of that portion of Levy Road. In 2018, January, we had a public meeting. We only had nine in attendance, but it was pretty much decided it would be minimal impact. That portion of Levy Road serves primarily the businesses along that road. There is some minimal cut-through traffic currently. Resolution was brought to council in March of 2018, giving us the authority to close the road, but it included a requirement that we construct a cul-de-sac. So in 2019, we were contracted again by a potential purchaser of the property and the adjoining property for another type business. And so we began working together to see if we could come up with a design of a cul-de-sac that would work with the design of their particular business. If you'll note, on this particular drawing, the hatched-out area is DOT right-of-way. That belongs to the state and federal government. If you can go to the next drawing. So we began working with them, and this is what we came up with to meet the requirements of a cul-de-sac. Well, if you'll notice, with the hatched-out area, that portion to the north is on state right-of-way. So we sent it to the state to get their input, and they have expressed concern and request that we get it off the right-of-way. So going back to the potential purchaser of the property, we looked at it again, and there's just no way to get a full cul-de-sac in there without impact to the business or development of that lot. So I'm here today to request the closure of the road without a cul-de-sac. Again, most of the road, the traffic on the road serves those businesses that are adjacent. Those businesses on the north all have an exit onto Victory Drive. So we think it would be minimal impact to the traffic in that area.
All right. Can we do that, I guess, in the form of a resolution? Mr. City Attorney? That's all right, yeah. We, the request to approve the road closure without a cul-de-sac, can we do that with an oral resolution today?
Yeah, as long as we're not accepting a particular piece of right-of-way, I don't see why not.
Okay. Well, there's some questions first, I think. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Where will you cut the road? Looking at this diagram, you say, "Close the road." Where will it be closed?
Pretty close to the, I know it's faded out, but pretty close to the section where the business to the north, the last business on the north is, in that area.
Basically, at the bottom of the cul-de-sac, on that diagram?
Well, it would actually be pretty much where it starts, the cul-de-sac starts.
The cul-de-sac starts, yeah.
Right. We would discourage any through traffic, and of course, we would put up appropriate signage and give people notice that the road's going to close, that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. So the land where the cul-de-sac is now, is that city property?
It is not.
That's formerly Gus's. So actually, if we close this road, that gives that land back to that property owner?
Correct.
So they would have more land to develop and use?
That is correct.
Okay. I like that idea. Thank you.
I was reminded that the council for that district is not here, so would it do any damage to postpone this till the 13th?
Well, they're, have a scheduled closure, exchange of property, and so, you know, obviously they want to move forward as soon as possible.
I think it's Mimi's, isn't it?
It is. Counselor Woodson's district.
Counselor Woodson? She, the presentation was made, I think, last meeting, wasn't it?
Not last meeting. It's been made before, though.
Okay. All right. Counselor Thomas?
She's been involved in the discussions.
Ms. Newman, you said that there are mainly businesses on that road? Are there residences on there?
There are some apartments along the road, but they could go back to South Flunkin Road. Levy runs between South Flunkin and Binning Drive, so it...
And have we had conversations with the owners of those properties about closing the road and what impact it would have?
We had previous, we had sent them notice previously when we were in discussions about closure of the road, and we didn't get any...
And if you remember, we were a restaurant, and I won't call the name, was considering going there when they were going to sell the property, and we had that very lengthy discussion during that time.
Ms. Newman, was there a resolution previously voted on about closure?
It was.
Okay. Well, then, if that needs to come back for some tweaking, we can do that, based on the oral resolution that council passes now, if they want to go ahead and vote.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I guess according to our rules, if a counselor has a concern at the next council meeting, they could bring it up?
If you vote in the majority, right, you could bring it back up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Well, given that and the fact that it has been discussed before, I mean, what is council's Motion and second to approve the closure without the cul-de-sac. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? It passes.
13th Street.
A brief update on 13th Street, just as a reminder for those that may not have been on council at the time. In May of 2017, the city, in partnership with Midtown, did a test of the closure of lanes along 13th Street. And we determined at that time, through measuring travel times and traffic, that it was minimal impact. So the plan at that time was when DOT, they had a project to resurface that portion of 13th Street all the way out to Macon Road, in the Reese Road area. And we were going to come back and restrike it for removing a lane, and then add parking back to the businesses. The concern was, with the amount of traffic and the speed of the traffic coming through that area, there was an impact to those buildings, and they couldn't retain business in those buildings at the time. So council passed a resolution in February of 2018, agreeing to that. Well, there was discussions at the time with the DOT contractor, because typically in a resurfacing contract, there is a method to raise the infrastructure, or the manholes and valve covers and that sort of thing of the utilities. Well, it was not included in the contract, so they delayed the contract to start negotiations to either work with the contractor, to put it back in his bid, or working with the individual utilities. Well, we were notified within the last month, actually, that this project has been delayed again because of the cost, the added cost. We heard a number in the vicinity of $700,000. And then also, the delay, it would take, one of the utilities estimated it would take 18 months to be able to lower and then raise the utilities. So DOT has given us verbal notification that the contract has been delayed again to possibly next year. The goal would be, they did mention the goal would be to get another project to extend the resurfacing on out to US 80 Beaver Run area. So we just wanted to notify council that it was not going to take place, because I know you may be getting calls from the Midtown group.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's just an update. If we learn more, we'll share it, but that's where it's at at this point.
The essence, though, of that issue is that it is not happening. It's just delayed because of some unexpected expenses.
Yes, sir. With that, Mr. Mayor, we will move on, and Deputy City Manager Hodge is going to -- we're going to talk about Government Center, the planning update, and then we're going to talk about the Government Center options as an update. But before the Deputy City Manager comes, Mr. Mayor, I want to remind the council and those here and those viewing that a couple of weeks back, we had a Marvin Woodward, who is Deputy Director for Construction for Georgia State Finance and Investment Commission. And they have under construction Supreme and Appellate Court in Atlanta, and he shared his background experience, that he had been with that office, I believe, for 30 years or so. And he is the boots-on-the-ground and project manager for construction projects for the state of Georgia, and those projects may be all over the state. And he provided an update on what they're doing with the Supreme Appellate Court, how they're doing it, the method that they're using. And initially, he said he wasn't going to give recommendations, and he said, "I am going to give you recommendations," if you recall. And so I asked CCGTV to pull a three- or four-minute snapshot of what Mr. Woodward said, and want to remind you that we have the same procurement method and process that they use at the states, specifically on this project and others. And we've used it on so many other projects in Columbus, to include this building we're in, the Aquatic Center, parking structure, and we can name so many others. So I wanted, just to recap before the Deputy City Manager comes, that you will hear just a snapshot of what he said, and so I'm going to ask staff to roll the video.
Thanks for having me. My name is Marvin Woodward. I am -- I do work for the state, and I am here to help. This may be the most important slide that I show you. We utilize three different project delivery methods, and I'll start at the bottom. The one on the bottom is called Design Bid Build. That's where, it's what most of this country was built with. You hire a design team, they develop a full set of plans and specs. You put those plans and specs out to bid, you receive a bid from the contractor, the low bid gets the project as long as they're qualified. The middle delivery method is Construction Manager at Risk. That's what we're using on our current judicial project, and that's the recommendation I would make to you. I'm just going to kind of speed up the pace here. We also used physical models of buildings to make sure we were happy with the design. I went out on my screen. You guys still see that?
Yes.
All right.
Touch it.
Touch the screen? All right, thank you. We also did a physical mock-up of one of the courtrooms in the Georgia World Congress Center during a time where they weren't busy. The design, I would make sure your design professional has the capabilities of doing that. The advantage is, is you can identify clash detections in the design during that process. And they can also do some animation, like some key spaces or some virtual reality, so that you can experience the building before it gets built. So I want to show you an example of that. So this is our atrium. So the atrium is nowhere close to being completed like this, but you can see through this animation, you can get a good feel for what the atrium and what the interior of that building is going to look like. This is the appellate courtroom. So again, the judges saw this, they got to make comments on it, and we've made adjustments because of this process and doing a physical mock-up. Here's the Supreme Court room. So I think you can see how valuable having this capability is, because with all this mere work, you don't want to make a mistake. You want to get it right the first time. You don't want to have any change orders or rework. And then this is a typical judge's chamber. Probably had more discussion about the judges' chambers than we did the courtroom. Nobody's surprised by that, no. So just some, you know, notes of interest. 224,000 square feet, seven floors. Atrium would be 112 feet high. So I went through that really fast, but I'd rather, I guess, in summary, and I'd be glad to take some questions. Again, I want to emphasize that you hire a judicial facility planning firm that's part of the design team. You could do that separate, or you can do that all under one contract with your design. And I would also recommend that you use the CM at Risk delivery process, because it's the most collaborative, and it also gives you feedback along the way that you're on budget. And that is so critical, because the traditional design bid-build method, you don't know you're on budget until the day you open bids. You know, Desire will give you estimates, but you really don't know. So under the CM at Risk process, we give the team a budget, and they can't exceed it. So you don't go over budget. And then the last thing is, I would encourage you to use the building information modeling, the 3D design and animation process, so you can experience the building before it's built. So I'll pause now and be glad to take any questions.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I didn't realize I was going to be full screen there. Got me by surprise, but Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to take it from here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We have a couple presentations related to the Government Center. First one, to talk about the planning process and the update for that. We've really kind of talked about how we move forward and plan for the Government Center reviewing the options, being able to provide cost associated with those options. So what we're proposing to move forward with is to utilize the same design team, construction manager, and project manager throughout the process. Originally, we had talked about kind of a two-phase process and using our architects that are under annual contract. And after further discussion, we feel that it's really important to make sure that we maintain that design team throughout the entire project. So our proposal is to issue an RFQ immediately for design services, to include the utilization of a judicial consultant, and this would be a two-phase contract. First phase being the planning pre-construction portion, and then if a successful SPOS vote would move on to provide the design services for the project itself. Again, to issue an RFQ to get a construction manager on board for both phases of that process, both the pre-construction planning, to have input into that process, as well as to provide the construction services moving forward if a SPOS vote is successful.
Counselor Allen has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go back to the judicial design team. Are we hiring them outside of the contract? Are we going to put an RFP out for that service, or are they going to be a part of the design team that we hire?
Our proposal is to include the judicial consultant as part of the design team. So the proposals that we'll receive related to design services, they will include their proposal on how they manage the judicial planning process. So we're making that part of the same RFQ proposal.
Well, if I've heard Mr. Woodward correctly, he said you could do it either way. Is there an advantage to having it part of the design team?
I think it just makes it easier, one proposal for us to review, because we're on a pretty tight timeline, than to add a fourth request for proposal, but we are more than willing to do it either way. We just felt that it would be more advantageous to include that as part of the design team.
Okay. Mayor and City Manager and Council, I think it's important for us to ask questions so that the public
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
really understands the direction we're headed in, and why we're taking the steps where we are. So that's, I'm not trying to be adversarial, I'm just trying to, you know, have everything transparent.
Absolutely.
Ask all the questions that somebody at home may be thinking. Of course, some of the questions I ask, they may not be thinking.
I was just going to say, I think that this is going to be a very deliberate process, and the input of council and the comments and the questions are critical to making sure that we follow a path that is an expedient path, but at the same time, it's kind of like moving slowly with haste, because we want to make sure that we're touching all the bases, but we want to make sure we're asking the questions. My personal thoughts on that were that it only, we only have one individual to hold accountable, because we're going to hold that design team accountable for how they manage the judicial consultant. And to me, that just seemed easier and cleaner than us giving instructions or getting feedback from one group and then us running to the other group. This way, we have done the due diligence on the front end. They have to be sharp with their pencil, because they're competing for the business, and then it's up to them to make sure that that judicial consultant works. So, but either way, I think will work. I just felt like this was pretty clean.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. So the judicial consultant would actually
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So the judicial consultant would actually fall under the construction manager?
They would fall under the design team, under the architect.
Okay, on the design team, is it the, who leads the design team?
The architect would be the lead in the design team, and they would bring on multiple subs. They're going to have to have, we're recommending include the judicial consultant, but they'll have mechanical and structural and information technology and security subs to help with that process. So they'll have multiple subs, but we'll have one vendor that's accountable to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hodge, I want to make sure that I understand what you just said. The judicial consultant would be a subcontractor to the design team?
To the architect, yes, ma'am.
To the architect. Not necessarily an employee of the architectural firm?
That's correct.
Probably not an employee of the architectural firm. Is that correct?
I would expect it would be a separate firm that would provide those services to the architect and work jointly with them in the judicial process, but
But that would be up to the
Well, I think we need to make that clear. That's a good question, because, you know, if we allow the architect, they could say, "Well, Joe can do that." And there are multiple recognized judicial consulting firms out there, and, because one question I asked the judge when we met with him, you know, because I wanted to know if the judge had a preference of one judicial consulting firm over another. And so, but I didn't, your question turned the light on for me, that we need to be careful to make sure we're very clear about that.
And I think that with what we've been talking about for the facility itself, a large portion of that, however we do that, that one building, those two buildings, however we do that, is going to be judicial in nature. It's going to be courtrooms and conference rooms and judges' offices and that sort of thing. So I think that it's, we can't think of the judicial consultant as an afterthought. They are probably, I think we probably could do without a consultant on the administrative part of the building, much, much easier than we could not have one on the judicial part. I do think, too, that we, that all of these folks need to work together. I've seen instances where you have someone design it, and somebody else who has no connection at all build it, and the builder, the designer designed something that is magnificent and either not costly or very costly, and the builder comes in to build it, and there's, the money doesn't match, I guess is what I'm trying to say. But, so I think that we need to make sure that all of our folks are talking with each other regularly and consulting, and making sure that everybody knows what's going on.
And that's one of the things, as you heard Mr. Woodward state, that the judicial consultant is extremely important for that particular reason, the planning of those office spaces, the courtroom spaces, and the projection into the future. It's extremely important, as well as the CM at Risk, which is a more collaborative effort between the design team and the construction manager as they're moving towards that end product.
And I know that, I would assume, that one of the things that this consultant does is to talk with the judges and the people who are doing, are in the business about what they want. On the other hand, if this judicial consultant is worth their salt, they're going to know new techniques, new technology, you know, those kinds of things that the judges may not be aware of to put into the building to make sure that, you know, we talked the other day about the lawyer's offices, all down close to the courthouse right now, and the ability for attorneys to file the ability for attorneys to file paperwork and whatever electronically and that sort of thing. The judicial consultant will have all of that knowledge and background if we're going to hire them.
Right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And just, and you mentioned something that, before I go to Counsel Davis, just to make sure everybody understands, we're still going to engage with the, both the judges and the attorneys. In fact, we'll be inviting council. We've got a, I think we've got a meeting set up to go to the local bar association and hear their concerns and talk to them about, about this very fluid, ongoing process. And we'll be, we'll be including council in that as well.
Well, and I would think that if the judge says, I want to be able to do X, Y, Z, this consultant will be able to say, okay, here's how you do it, and here's how you do it efficiently and, you know, with the least amount of money that you have to spend and those kinds of things.
I agree. Counsel Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I want to share some thoughts on this. And one, I'm just going to say, I'm not, you know, being in development myself, I mean, I'm not a big fan of consultants, but I will admit that they serve a purpose, okay? And sometimes, you know, things can get costly. When you go that route and they can get out of hand, it can get big. And that's the key here, is controlling all that. So we use the term before, sometimes too many cooks in the kitchen, and that can't happen. You talk to too many people, everybody's got a perspective and idea, and things get big and out of hand. But I do think that we've got a lot of good people on staff that know what we need. We're not in Atlanta, we're not a big city away, we're Columbus. And we somewhat have a footprint already of the services that we provide. You may need to add a little here or there, but we already kind of know that, and we've got some people that are already onboard, that have a good understanding of this. Matter of fact, I've seen plans and prints and layouts and all, already of all this. So I would probably concede to the fact that if, if we go with a judicial planning consultant, and although, everybody knows there's several out there, you can get a complete firm that provides a multi-faceted level of services from contracting to architectural, so all the way through to the planning, or you can go with just a planner and then turn, go a different route. There's different routes that you can take here. I don't know if that's the thought process in this, if we're going to look at all of it. I know Counsel Allen kind of touched on it about a bit, but the clock is ticking. I mean, we got to, we got to move on this. But anybody, and let me go back with the judicial service, I think that could get a little complicated, okay? And we may want to look into the future and, you know, and I would yield to probably trying to understand exactly the square footage and what the needs are. I think if you go online, you'll understand that these things are already laid out. They're somewhat cookie cutters already laid out. I mean, we don't need what the Supreme Court of Georgia has, but, you know, we can get by with facilities here. And a lot of it's going to axis around how you finish these things. That's where all your cost is, is in your FF and E and your finishing and all. I mean, this, if you take, for example, this would be a beautiful courtroom. Okay? So you've somewhat got pieces of the puzzle here in how you do things, you know? It's, this is not very costly. Some of that stuff we saw on the screen is tremendously costly, but you still can get by and make it happen, and everybody can be happy. Those are things that I hope that we take in consideration along with the information, the feedback that's given to the consultant. Once we establish that, and I don't look at it as being too much beyond the square footage and what we already have, if it's maybe want to clean it up, some of the courts can get smaller, some of them, you know, we've got some pretty big courts over there at the, at the Government Center. So I'll kind of yield to that, but it's key, the footprint is going to be, you can't really engage anybody until you really understand the footprint and all this. In other words, where, okay? And that's going to tell you what you can work with and how they can lay it out. You may want, I don't, I'm not a fan of one building or two buildings. I think that this thing, we really need to discuss three, four, five buildings. You know, you may want to have the opportunity to use several GCs, and there's several local GCs versus just one GC. So, and bring more people in the community and get them active in this. I think we need to add other pieces of the puzzle to this with other courts, the annex, other things that need to be looked at, too. It's not just a government-centered judicial building. And, you know, and saying that and trying to keep it short here, I think, let me just pose this idea out there. I think we've got a chance here, this city has a chance, to change the whole character of our community, okay, if it's done right. I don't think ever before in our city have we ever had the chance to deploy, you're talking, you know, depending on what we do, close to $100 million in capital? I don't call it capital. But that kind of resources, you have a chance to deploy that. Can you imagine mixing that with all the other development that's in the pipeline in the private sector? Can you imagine just marrying all that up and making it work? We've got a chance to do something really, really fantastic in our community. Got a chance to, to do things in areas and districts that need a jump start. This could be the catalyst to make that happen. This could be the catalyst to meet the needs of the private sector. There's going to be parking and things that can be jointly shared and making new development come in that we've got an opportunity to do. You know, if it's placed right, you've got an opportunity to really jump start development in our community. That's a win. Versus, if you look at it, staying in the same place or same places, what do you get? You get the same old, same old. But maybe we ought to start looking at this instead of just saying judicial building or Government Center. Maybe we ought to start looking at this as a revitalization catalyst. Maybe we ought to start looking at this as a redevelopment spark plug that's going to energize our city and really change the face and character of our city. You've got an opportunity to do some fantastic things here, not only with traffic patterns and new buildings, mix them in with the old buildings that you can jump start, get some of these old buildings going. People are going to want to invest. When they see that kind of capital going on the ground, they're going to want to get involved, they're going to want to be part of it. You know, that's what to get excited about. So, you know, where is the big key? And I think any consultant's going, they just can't start drawing the square footage or whatever until they figure out what they have. You want to get one building, two buildings, three buildings? You know, what do we have to work with? I think those are some of the things that we need to answer. I'm going to tell you, I think the, just the, I think we've already, most of us are leaning in the direction of the, a new site and new buildings. Honestly, the more and more I dissect this thing, that's really the only option you have. And I don't want to get into that this, you know, now, but if anybody would like to talk about it, I'll share my thoughts with you on that. There's just several factors that you're not going to be able to overcome, so it does make sense to spread this out. And I'll tell you another thing, too, we've got an opportunity as a city, okay, to really look at our operational cost, to maybe even change our budget, our operating budget, you know, reduce it. We could maybe reduce our budget by several million if we do it the right way. So I like those kind of things. That takes the burden off the future generations. You don't have to take out debt on this thing, go in with the SPOLOST, you don't have to take out debt and pass that on to other people that can be paid for. And we can learn from things in the past, challenges in the past about maintenance and, and, you know, capital improvements and things like that. Everything deteriorates, everything depreciates. We're seeing that right now at a rapid pace in our community. It's just going to happen. You've got to deal with it some way, but we've got a limited budget, and we've dealt with so many challenges over the years that, you know, maybe we can do like, you know, I'll call it a reserve for lack of better purposes that can, or better terms that can take care of some of these future costs that we're dealing with now. And they're not going away. They're going to get bigger. So these challenges have to be addressed now. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, the more we're going to deal with this. So, and that's another key thing, the timing on all this, being done right. You've got to get it going. If you don't, it's going to take, in the, right now, I mean, you can't even find subcontractors in Atlanta. I mean, it is hard to find. It's just a rocking and rolling economy right now, and it's just hard to find these people. So you've got to plan. It's going to take time to get this stuff done, and the sooner the better. So I would go back to what I first said, a judicial consultant, maybe getting that piece of the puzzle solved. I think the other ones, architects, and, you know, we can figure that out and then let the architects take it from there, but you've got to know where and you've got to have a footprint, and that's going to be key. I've always said I like the idea of a campus park-type setting that would create efficiencies and synergies that we don't have right now. We're going in all different directions. Maybe we can do that. And at the end of the day, we can save, save a lot, create energy, new energy-efficient, cost-effective buildings that we save more money in the operating budgets in the future, which that just frees up more money to do good things with, or to give it back to the citizens and look at reducing our mileage. So that's my 10 cents, Mayor.
No, good comments. And in fact, I think you'll see as we go forward, we're going to try to do a lot of exactly what you're talking about. I think, I think you're right on point. As we get through this, there'll be, there'll be enough of a lag in trying to get these people onboard that we will, and it's going to be important, I think, for council to understand, from the administration's standpoint, and I can't, I don't want to speak for the City Manager, but our objective is to try to keep it moving, like you said, to give you some, to give council some ideas and let you edit, erase, or just scrub it and say, no, want to go this direction. So our job is just to kind of keep things in place so that y'all feel comfortable getting adequate information. So I think your comments are very timely. Appreciate it.
Okay. So just the timeline for the RFQ for the design services, which again, recommendation was to include the judicial consultant, and part of those proposals will require them to give us the qualifications of the judicial consultant and what they're recommending. To issue that RFQ in mid-August, we're working on the specs as we speak, to have the proposals due back mid-September. Our evaluation to take place September through November, and to bring that back to council for an award in November. The evaluation committee would include representatives from the City Manager's Office, engineering, inspection and codes, planning, the courts, sheriff's office, IT, finance, and public work. So there's a lot of individuals, there'll be voting members or advisory members to make sure that the selection process includes everything and meets the requirements of all those areas. We'll follow closely after that with the RFQ on the construction manager, really just one month later, mid-September issuing that RFQ. It's important to get that construction manager onboard to coordinate with the architect. I think as Counselor Thomas said, we don't want them working on a building that the materials cost us five times as much as what we wanted to spend. So important to get that construction manager onboard. And again, that would be a two-phase contract. They would provide pre-construction services, and we would negotiate that with them, as well as the construction manager if a successful SPOLOST and the project moves forward. Those proposals will be due back mid-October. Evaluations through January and bringing that back to council for an award in the January time period. And also with RFP on project management, we think it's really important to have a project manager in addition to city staff on this project. Issuing that RFP in mid-November, evaluations to take place January and February, and again, bring that back in a close time proximity to the construction manager. Project manager would, go ahead.
Sorry, we've got a question from Counselor Crabbe.
Okay, I think you, maybe you were just getting ready to answer my question.
Okay.
But are these in order of RFPs? Because to me, it seems like the project manager would be the first one to be hired because they're overall, the whole design team, but you're saying that an architect is that?
Yes, there's the design team that will oversee the design, the judicial, the planning process. A project manager will be brought onboard mostly for the construction, but obviously we want to have them onboard as the planning process is taking place so that they're familiar with all the discussion that's going on. But they'll oversee mostly the construction project, making sure timelines are met, quality control, inspections, but they'll come onboard and assist as needed, but mostly will be utilized during the construction phase.
Okay, so they're not part of the design team?
Not typically.
Okay. And then also in this RFQ for design services, is it possible to put in the guidelines for the judicial consultant? Like, you know, like they can choose between, you know, four or five that we've already been told are the best to avoid them getting a judicial consultant that we don't necessarily believe is adequate?
The RFQ will include requirements for a judicial consultant, but that's part of their proposal on who they submit to utilize for that, and that's part of our evaluation process. So we'll put in criteria and qualifications of that judicial consultant and the expectations, and that's part of their proposal, who they utilize as the judicial consultant.
Okay, so that's how you narrow the field. Instead of saying a specific company, you narrow the field that the, there's only a few of these companies that fit within that parameter.
There's only a few that we're aware of. There might be others out there, and as they submit their qualifications, they'll provide, you know, all the facilities that they've worked on before, their years of service in that type of industry. So those are some of the things that we'll evaluate as part of the submission process.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor House?
My question really ties in closely with what Counselor Crabbe asked, who's in charge when? It sounds like we start off with the design team because they're going to work the design of the building. When the construction manager comes onboard, if there is a issue between the two of them, the referee, is that going to be you or somebody in the city staff?
That will be the city staff as well as the project manager, which
He's not on yet, that's why I asked that question.
He won't be, he will be on shortly or
Shortly after, that's right.
Shortly after that.
Before he's on, who's the referee? City staff?
City staff.
Okay. Absolutely. And so once, once the project manager's on, since they're all three working, then the project manager would typically work with the two teams if there's a concern. If he can't solve it, he would come to us, but still.
And will, obviously, city staff will participate throughout the process.
Sure. Okay, all right, thanks.
Oh, Counselor Davis?
One of the things that just, that, you know, I know we're going in steps here, but some of the stuff you're talking about is further down the way. I'm sure we'll have more conversation on it, but just to add to that, I get a little nervous of exactly who, you know, the, who comes first on a lot of this stuff. I think determining the price is a big thing, your cost per square footage. I see the architect getting involved sooner or later to start drawing this stuff out where a GC can come in and start looking at it, but I don't know if you just want to pick one person to go through a exploratory phase before you get to that, what do we think the cost is or what the budget is? You know, that may be determined by each contractor. If somebody thinks that they've got the project, certainly, you know, you're not going to get the, you're not going to get the, you know, you're not going to get the best, best cost when it, when it comes to this. And nailing that cost down is important. I know the mayor and I and some others on council have had some talks about this. I think he's got some ideas to maybe, to maybe chart the courts in some of those, some of those areas. I think that'll work. We talked about putting a group of maybe developers or stakeholders or council members, whatever, but maybe looking at some of this stuff further down the way and how to, how to chart that out. I do think, though, whatever, you know, I think we ought to nail these costs down and get firm cost. I don't like pre-cost and then adding into the project costs, just maybe looking at one cost for a complete package, if that's the direction we're going. I don't like the thing where you just, you know, I'll take this as a minimum and then I'll charge you by the hour and so forth. I mean, the, the clock ticks on that stuff and it can keep getting, keep getting costly. But I think we already have firm understandings of how we're going to work on these things, whether before the project takes place or after, or to be included altogether. I would caution the city in being careful from that perspective. I just think that you'll get a better development from that standpoint.
Thank you, sir. Counselor House?
Is anyone from this group going to be who tells us it's going to cost X amount of dollars to go to site A and Y amount of dollars to site B, or is that a totally separate? separate process you're going to cover in the next week?
We'll talk about that more when we go through the options, but that will be part of this process as well, is, once we have the options, one, two, three, or four narrowed down, and that slight selection process, that will obviously fold into this.
Be part of this, okay. Thank you.
Okay. And just a reminder, the timeline for the 2020 SPOST, so you can see how this fits in, and it is a substantial amount of time that will take to develop the cost for those options. And so, we're wanting to move forward with the process that we've outlined, so that it coincides with the SPOST timeline that we're working towards. And so, we'll be moving forward with those RFPs and RFQs, to get those out on the street. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Councilor Thomas?
Ms. Hodgson, this may be a chicken and egg question, which comes first. As I, make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, the, the RFQs that are going out will be to hire somebody to go to the meetings of the, of the citizens to see, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused here about, we won't know until August, I mean, until November of 2020, whether or not we have the money from a SPOST to fund all of this other stuff. How, how does that mesh together?
Okay, so, remember when council issued the bonds last year, there's about a million dollars that was for the planning of evaluating the options of the government center. So, this phased approach that we're talking about with the design team and the construction manager at risk, that million dollars will be utilized to evaluate the options and provide costs associated with the options that are selected by council, in order to get a cost. Because you need a, a budget for the government center project to be included on the SPOST ballot.
Chicken and egg.
Exactly. So, this first phase is really to establish what that budget will be, to be included on that SPOST ballot. If the SPOST is successful, then we'll move into phase two, which is actually the design of the building and the construction of the building, which will come from SPOST proceeds. So, it's really two phases, but it's important to be consistent, to have the same team, so that we don't have one team preparing the budget, and then another team come in and say, well, that's not going to work. So, it will help to be consistent to have that same design team and CM at risk in the planning process and through construction.
And I do think that it's important for the design team and, and the people who are doing the planning to be a part of these meetings that we are talking about, going out to the public to see what needs to be done, meetings with the judicial contingent, with the administrative folks, all of those kinds of things. I just wanted to make sure that, where we ought to be with which comes first, and it sort of comes together, I guess. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Mayor, the deputy city manager mentioned the million dollars to evaluate the options that we put before the team. And so, when we get into the next presentation, we're going to be sharing, that we've shared before, I think we shared them at the last meeting, the four options. And it's going to be our goal to start to narrow those options down, that we don't take that million dollars and try and evaluate four different options, but we want to evaluate one, or two, or a hybrid of the two options. We just got to get it and narrow it down. And then, as far as the timeline for the 2020 SPOST, we know that we cannot rush this process. We got to get it right. But, we're going to, don't get upset with us when we keep talking about the timeline, because, you know, one thing that we cannot change is the November 3, 2020 vote. And so, we've backed everything off from there. And so, you're going to hear us mention the timeline, and you may feel pushed, but we just, we know that November 3 is, that date is not going to change. And so, we're just going to try and work within the timeline. And we may come back to you and adjust the timeline here and there as we go forward. But, the only thing we can adjust, we will not be adjusting, will be the April 3, 2020 date. So, with that, I think we can transition to the next update on the options.
So, a lot of this is information that you've heard before. Wanted to go through it again, also for the viewing public, is to look at the four options that we've been discussing. Option one is to demolish the wings and the garage, build a new judicial center, and to renovate the tower for city administrative purposes. Option two, again, on the existing site, would be complete demolition of the facilities, the tower, the wings, and the garage, and have new facilities on the existing site. Option three is a combined of existing and a new site. It would be a complete demolition of the facilities on the existing site, to provide a new judicial center on that same site, and to move the administrative function in that building to a new site. And then, the fourth option would be to provide new facilities on a new site, both the judicial center and the administrative offices. This is just a reminder of when we did have the public meetings, what the vote was. Majority that attended those meetings was option four, which is a new site, and option two was next, which was both buildings on the existing site.
Excuse me, Deputy City Manager. Councilor Crabbe?
I've been looking this over for many months now, as everybody has. And I just see that taking any option that involves demolition off, off the table. Because I believe we have an opportunity to resell the government center and the wings in that area, and put some more money in, towards these constructions. I also feel we could resell the annex building and help fund this. I think the government center can be repurposed into mixed use, and then we'd save on the demolition expense. And then, the logistics of moving all the employees and the courts out of that location into temporary locations, the cost of that, and then just the logistics of it, those are my points that, that kind of support my thinking of just taking all of those options that include demolition off the table.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the discussion really is one building versus two buildings. If you look at one building, it could be a new building somewhere else, or on the existing site, as opposed to renovating or expanding that existing building. When you look at two buildings, you have a judicial and an admin building. Looking at the judicial building, it could be a new building versus renovation of that existing building, and a new site or an existing site. And I've labeled these, one, two, three, and four. This is how the options correlate to those either existing buildings. So, for the judicial center, all four options is a new building. Three of those options include the existing site, one option, which is option four, which was the one most selected by the public meetings, is a new site. Same for the admin building, option one was the renovation, option two was a new building on the existing site, option three and four was a new site and a new building. And again, option four was the highest selected during those public meetings. Pros and cons of each one of the different options, pros of a new building is logistics of operating, as Councilor Crabbe had mentioned, while the construction is going on, no interruption of service if you have a new building, opportunity to combine administrative functions, the government center and the annex functions together, new building, ability to design to meet the current and the future needs, and keep all of the judicial functions into the same building. Also allows you to have up-to-date systems for HVAC, internet, which does provide operational savings. We've also discussed moving the judicial center close to the jail, which would allow for better security on the transporting of inmates, a new site, opportunity to sell the government center site, economic impact in the area that's receiving that investment. Pro of two buildings is to separate judicial and administrative functions, and also provide better security setup for those two facilities. A pro and a con is change. Obviously, change could be looked at either way. Con of a judicial facility on a new site is having those judicial functions moved from a historic site where it's always been. And also, you have attorney's offices that are within close proximity of the government center, so that's also something to consider. Con of abandoning the existing building, you have a potential opportunity for prolonged vacancy. And also, to demolish that building, there would be a cost to demolish it, and it would completely change the skyline of Columbus. Renovation of the existing building, obviously, the cost of relocation associated with that, and the creation of temporary courtroom space will be definitely something to consider. Con of the existing building, there's obviously limitations with that existing footprint, and it would require extensive renovation to meet current operations. And we would continue to have the challenge with security and the segregation of court parties during those hearings. And also, the parking for employees and citizens would still be a concern with the existing building. Con of the existing site, if you, you'll have the noise of construction. If you demolish, part, and rebuild while the employees remain in the tower, you'll have that noise of construction during that time. And also, that will impact the Springer, the River Center, and those surrounding businesses by having that. On that location, con of a new site would be you're moving all those city services out of Uptown. So, there's a lot of things to consider evaluating each one of the different options.
Councilor House?
Have we had any comments or feedback from, from the attorneys that would be inconvenienced by moving the courthouse somewhere?
We have, and we're going, we've arranged a couple of opportunities to meet with them again, and hear from them, kind of en masse. There's been concerns expressed by the judges, and also by specifically the trial lawyers. Most of the research can be done online, but, you know, if that's where the judge's courtroom is, and then they've got interview issues, and they've got some, some proximity issues. But, but we're going to make sure we hear from them, so, so they'll be part of this process.
Okay, thank you.
So, for the recommendation, just to narrow those options, administration's recommendation is to narrow those to option two and option four. That would be two buildings on the existing site, or two buildings on a new site. Those are the recommendations that we're making to try to narrow those options. And I've listed pros and cons to each one of those options for council to consider. And as Councilor House just mentioned, additional consideration is the judges and legal community input, as well as evaluation of those potential sites, whether they're currently owned by the city, or those sites that we would have to purchase. For those two buildings, we'll obviously look at that. If there's any particular site you want us to research or include in that evaluation, please let us know. But we'll begin, which we already have, looking at those existing sites already owned by the city.
Councilor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to say, I, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be just attached to, or married up to two buildings. I'd like to encourage the city maybe looking at three buildings, possibly even four, and I'll tell you why. The, you know, there's, I think there's ways to save in cost, construction cost. I think there's ways to save in efficiencies. You know, I mentioned earlier about campus park kind of setting and the cost in there, and, and the synergies. I don't think everybody has to be in one building. What you're talking about, when I see two buildings in here, I'm thinking, that's massive. I don't think that that's the route to go. And that's going to be extremely costly, you start, costly you start doing that. But if you break it down into smaller footprints, I think it's more manageable, and you're going to save both on operating cost and long, and construction cost and all this. You don't have to do some of the things, you start getting, you, what you, two buildings, I think you've got to go up, and you've got to go out. And that's going to be a whole different foundation and base for the construction that the GC is going to have to apply. But if you keep a smaller footprint and smaller buildings, and space it out a little bit, and still create the coefficients of where it all works, I think you're going to benefit, the city's going to benefit from, from doing that. So, I'd like to encourage that, not just, maybe not just two buildings, but potentially three or more. And I think you got to really look at recorder's court. I mean, you, when you look at state municipal, they function different, superior court functions different, you've got different entities. So, when you do that, you could look at cutting these buildings up a little bit better, and probably in the long run, you, you can do more for less, is what I'm saying. So, that needs to be looked at as well. I wouldn't just give the, the go-ahead to anybody just on one building, because it's going to, I think at the end of the day, everybody's going to say, oh, wow, didn't know it, it was going to be like that, or it got that big, or how did this get out of hand? Now, as far as the, the government center, you know, the more and more I think about this, I don't think you have, I'm for option four. I think you got to, you got to go new, and you're going to have to find another site, because of just the challenges that are tied in this. You know, if you go in there and renovate the building and bring it up to date, and all, it's going to cost a lot of money to do that. But the challenge is, there's not, how are you going to move all those people? I mean, really, how are you going to do with that, deal with that? We talked about that earlier. There's just no way to do that with how this government functions, whether from a communication, or just, you know, you got to move them out, move them back in. I mean, there is a lot, a lot of cost. And then, to only find out in another 10, 15 years, you're dealing with the same issues that you're dealing with today. You're going to have to do it all over again. It's an old building. You really got to understand that and look at that. And if you talk about some of the history, go back and talk to some of the people that were involved, there was a lot of challenges that initially, that started with that building. But I don't see any other way. You don't have to do anything with that building in the beginning, I mean, or that whole site. I mean, you could figure, we can figure that out later. I think the key thing is getting buildings up and running, and then you can move people to those buildings. And you're going to find out that's going to be the most cost-effective way. And I go back to what I said earlier about the opportunity to really look at cost savings in your budget, operational cost savings in your budget. I really believe they're going to be here. If you go back into the same building, you're going to either have the same or even more operational costs to deal with. And how are we going to absorb that? So, we've got to look at that complete picture. And I just don't see any other, other way to do it. it without, I mean, you got an opportunity here to do something that's gonna take us out 35, 40, 50 years versus 10, 15, you're back at it again, you just pass it on, kick the can down the road, because you're gonna deal with the same issues all over again. And there's a lot of challenges there. I think, you know, Mr. Newt Aaron touched on some of those initially when we started talking about all this and what it would take. I mean, it's gonna be the most, least cost to do that, okay? I mean, that's, that's an absolute, but you're gonna be continuing to put more money back into this thing on a constant basis, and it just doesn't make sense, to me, it just doesn't make sense, when you have an opportunity to fully fund, finance, pay it off, and reduce your operational cost. To me, that's a no-brainer. I think that's a win-win for the community. If it's done right, if it's master plan, I go back to being a master plan, a master planning this, we got an opportunity to do it. You got one chance to do it, you gotta do it right, or else you'll be dealing with the same issues another 10, 15 years, we're just passing on to the next generation. And that's why I'm such a proponent, I feel like the Option Four is the best way to go, and not just looking at two buildings, but maybe three plus, and spacing it out. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask, are we thinking about all the courts in this facility, if we go with Two and Four? Would it be Recorder's Court all the way through Superior Court, or would it, and of course, that would encompass, you'd have to have the jury pool, the sheriff, and, you know, how that all ripples out, so is that what we're thinking?
No, Recorder's Court would not, is not included in what we are discussing. Recorder's Court connected to the jail, I don't think there's any better option for Recorder's Court than to be connected to the jail. People get arrested, and they've gotta have first appearance within so many hours, and, you know, they can bring them right out of the jail into the courtroom right there, if you've ever been there, Recorder's Court, and they can take them right back in.
Too many times.
And so, you know, to put, to move Recorder's Court to a different location detached from the jail, I think would create a nightmare. So Recorder's Court is not included, because they would have to then get into, right now there is no transportation involved in Recorder's Court.
Right.
Yeah, so if we detached it, you'd have to get into transport, and that's a whole new expense and ballgame, so that is not included.
Well, I guess my thought, and what I had been talking with several folks about, is my preference would be to move the judicial building over next to the jail, and then have some type of walkover from the jail to the, to the facility, like we do in Recorder's Court.
Yes.
And providing an upgrade or some type of new facility similar to what they have now, but much more enhanced for Recorder's Court would be what I was thinking. But if we're gonna, the importance, as you mentioned, of them being connected to the jail is valid. That's, it's gotta, it's gotta happen that way.
Yes.
But I was just concerned, concerned if we were including them in the new judicial building, or we were gonna leave them where they were. So that, you answered that question, so thank you.
Counselor House?
We talked about this some last week, this question was for the city attorney, are we gonna, how do we resolve whether there's an issue or not on the terms of site versus seat, and if we go a new location versus currently where we are, so we don't get tripped up halfway through this process and suddenly find out there is an actual concern? How do we, how do we know for sure?
Like I said last time, we're getting some more research done, we'll have a definitive answer. On the preliminarily, it looks like the old statute that provides for a probate judge order and a referendum will not apply to us, but there may be a real estate restriction going back to 1828 that does apply, that we'll have to ask the General Assembly for help on, as far as sale of that site in the future. But as far as moving the actual buildings, it doesn't look like that's gonna be a legal problem, but we wanna nail that down. We're still having that research done on the title and the other, the referendum point.
Do you have a projected date?
We should have something in a few weeks on that, or, you know, two, three weeks, I would say.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, to your comments earlier, and Counselor Allen's question, I think, you know, having the opportunity to do a splotch, if you have a splotch, you could generate a lot of revenue to be able to deal with some of the issues of the city. I think we've already just went through, and we're gonna be requested probably soon to do some more stuff with Recorder's Court. And you may find out that the judicial consultants come back and say that you need to, you know, make some changes there as well. That's a, how old's that building? That building's old. It's really old. We just pumped how much money into it, and we're gonna have to pump more money into it. So I like to encourage us to think, to put that on the list, and to be one of the buildings, you can, look, that's why I said the footprint where, the footprint and a master plan, you can move that building and still do exactly what you're talking about. And, you know, and I'll go a step further, we may wanna look at meeting some of the needs that we know that's happening right now at the jail. You know, it seems to be the trend now, instead of just building more jail cells, that the trend now is trying to deal with areas of maybe less security, less security levels, but dealing more with mental health and drug addictions and homelessness. You know, you don't have to put them in a full jail facility, maybe you have a less secure, you can, you can, you know, from that standpoint, that seems to be a trend now. Maybe we need to consider a wing and kinda add all this together, and that's what I'm talking about, a master plan.
Yeah.
Because you got an opportunity to do it, and I say again, you know, if you're gonna do it, you got one chance to do it, you need to do it right. So I would encourage to include that facility, even the annex, the annex is gonna cost some money here soon. So if you have the financial capital to pay these buildings off, and then it becomes operational cost in your budget, I mean, if you put the plan together and the citizens see that, that you have that opportunity to make a difference 30, 35, 40, 50 years out for the next generation, I think we're doing a service to our community and the next generation to look at those things, instead of just two components of it, because you're gonna be right back dealing with it, and we have a chance to put it on the list altogether and solve it all. Now, it may be phased in, but you can still do that, and I'd like to encourage the city to do that, instead of having to just keep, go back in to our operating cost in the future, or having to deal with a matter of raising new taxes or whatever, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna talk about that. But this is probably the most cost-effective and least, least burden to the citizenry that you can come up with, a plan that you can come up with.
And, Mr. Mayor, with that said, we can, we can certainly have the judicial planners, consultants, look at Recorder's Court as they look at Superior and all of the other courts, and we'll at least have that information. And to Counselor Allen's point, if the Judicial Center was built down and connected to the jail, it makes, it would make sense to have Recorder's Court in that Judicial Center, because, you know, for safety and we could eliminate the transportation cost. I see those people coming and going every day, our Sheriff Department, moving people in for court and trying to move them out, and, you know, that's, that's a whole different ballgame in itself, you know, especially when there are the high-profiled cases. I mean, it's a nightmare. And just think, if you, if the Judicial Center was connected to the jail, the public would never see that, it'd be seamless. And it would make sense that Recorder's Court would be a part of that facility, and you could use that portion of the building to create a mental health wing, or do whatever you want to do, because it's already connected. So we will include in the scope for the judicial consultant to look at Recorder's Court in the process.
And that would be wise, and you, you know, that, you know, you can connect it, I mean, you can connect it maybe and still stay low to the ground and deal with some of your cost factors, or you can do a separate building either way, but I think that it can be laid out in such a way to do exactly what you're talking about, coordinating and working in synergy, as I, as I said earlier. And I think that you may, you know, again, I go housing everything under one roof, that's massive, but if you break it down in smaller buildings, it's more cost-effective and doable. And another thing, too, is we need to understand, you know, I'm not saying that our, our local GCs and subcontractors are not qualified, but the bigger and the higher up you go, you start getting into another level that you're gonna have to go outside to other areas to find that kind of expertise to come in, and then they're gonna bring specialized labor and all, and then if you can even get that in Columbus, Georgia, you know, it's gonna add to the, to the construction schedules and the timing of all this stuff. So, you know, keeping it lower, smaller, all of our GCs would have an opportunity to participate, and even our local subcontractors. I like, I like that concept, so just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
I know that it will not come as a surprise to you that one of my issues in all of these things is making sure that we get input from the people who are going to be affected by this. I do think that the judicial consultant needs to be consulted on all of the judicial issues, including Recorder's Court, what do we do with Recorder's Court? But I would also like for us to make sure that we are talking to the other people who use our facilities. It may be that we could contact some of the various organizations in town about making a presentation at their, their meeting. I don't know if the Bar Association would let us come to a meeting of the Bar Association and have input, the Realtors Group, let them have input. I do think it's important for us to have the employees of the city, both those who are currently housed at the annex and the ones that are housed uptown, talk about what they think and what they need. The thing that came to my mind was, I don't know if some of you may recall, that when we, as we were building this building, the counselors were invited to come out here to take a look at this room before it was completed, and at that point, there was not a step over here. This was blocked, was, was blocked off. And we said, wait, wait, we need to be able to come down and up on both sides. We were able to do that because the room was not finished, we didn't have to, you know, start whatever. And so, some of those kinds of things. I'm thinking Rotary, Kiwanis, all of those folks may be interested in having a, a presentation, not, and we need to make this very clear, if we are moving toward a splotch, this is not a pitch for voting for the splotch, but it is an input session. And I also would like for us to have some kind of, I'm not sure how we would do this, but some, some way of responding to citizens who have suggestions about what we need to do. For example, I hear all the time, why don't you move this into the K-Mark Building or the Sears Building? Well, we need to be able to say to those folks, here's some reasons why we don't do that. And I'm not sure that we have that official capability, if you will. You know, my first issue is it takes them off the tax roll, you know, but other than that, I don't wanna go to Sears Roebuck Building to, to get into that traffic, you know, those kinds of things. But I just, I just think we need to be very, very aggressive, if you will, to make sure that anybody who wants to have input has the opportunity to do that, and particularly including our employees who are going to be working in that facility, both the judicial employees, as well as the administrative employees. Some of the people who work in that building now, who use that building now on a regular basis, are not attorneys, but they use some of the legal areas that are there. I'm thinking about some of the Realtor people, and so, some of those kinds of things. So just remember that Counselor Thomas is gonna say, well, have you talked to so-and-so? Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of counsel, as I said, you're gonna hear me mention on a regular basis the Tamlan, and, you know, in an effort to kinda keep things moving. And so, we have put on the table Option Two, two buildings' existing site, and Option Four, two buildings' new site. And so, what, what we would like to do, because we gotta continue this discussion, we gotta come back and, and talk about options again, but we want to come back having moved options one and three off the list, and talk about Option Two, Option Four, and then any mix of hybrid of the two. I heard adding the third building, but we'd be talking about these two plus whatever else you want to do. And it could be, again, a mix of the two or something different, but at the end of the day, we may at some point have a hybrid of Option Two, Option Four, and something new, and we may have one option. We may have Option Two and the hybrid, and take Option Four off, and have two options. But we'd like to come back, and we're gonna have to keep bringing this back as an update and discussion at every meeting until we can agree on one or two. We have a million dollars to start looking at options, and so we gotta, we gotta come to some agreement at some point, that this is the one, or these are the two that we're gonna look at, and it could be Option Two or Four as a, as we recommend them today, or that mix that one of these two come off, and you have one of the two and whatever option you come up with. So if there's no objection, if there's no objection, we're going to move Options One and Three off the list. And so, we're now discussing Two, and then you can create anything you want from there, if that's...
And I think, I think what we need to do, though, going forward, even though we don't have a majority, and we don't, and this is not official votes, I think that it's not only perfectly okay, but it's, it's good. Like Counselor Davis comes up with an idea, you know, I've, as a developer, I know some efficiencies that might be gained through doing three or four buildings. You know, I think early on, we just... You know, I think early on, we just vote on them. We try to keep it at two and vote on them. One will be dropped off. And then, because the issue we're going to run into eventually, once we get the design team on board, is they have to start doing the work to give you a cost for the options we have. And we can do multiple options, we can do three or four more, but there is a cost that will be associated with expanding the number of options we're looking at. So, I think this is too big of an issue to do by consensus. I think this is something that we have to actually ask people to voice their opinion and vote, and then the, you know, the two winners move on.
Well, and if that's the case, Mayor, if we want to vote, then on the next meeting, I would be asking you to vote to remove options one and three, and further discuss two, four, or any new option you want to introduce.
Yeah, and then if another, if a counselor says, well, I've been thinking about this, I've been talking to people, I'd like this under the consideration as well, under consideration, we can put that up as a vote as well. What we really need to narrow it is when we get that design team on board. Okay? We've got a number of people wanting to speak. I guess I'll clarify. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, let me, if we're going to have further discussion, I know we only got, well, we got five members here, so there's no vote going to be taken today, but I think, afford your best option, and let me encourage you to, or maybe council to really think about two here, okay? I don't even look at that as an option. The more and more I've thought about that over time, it's not. Just, I go back to what I said earlier, can you imagine moving a massive amount of people with the technology and communications attached, with all the different departments that work together? You tell me where in Columbus, Georgia, you're going to put these people. You tell me where in uptown you're going to put them. Are you going to build a new facility and erect it, and then set it up where you have courts operating and all the other stuff that we just went through? I mean, we saw the challenge that we just dealt with, having to deal with the pipes breaking in the courts. Now, to go out and do that, and then tear everything down, and then try to fit them, you know, which is going to be, I go back to a building getting massive on that site, it's going to take a long time to get all that stuff done, and it's going to cost a lot of money. That's not good for the city. So, I don't look at that as an option anymore, and I think when people understand that...
Well, let me say this, Counselor, don't mean to interrupt you, but, and option four, I hear you. Option two, remaining, stayed on the table, allows us the opportunity, we said additional consideration, judicial, legal, community input, and the mayor has indicated that we're, we've already scheduled some time, we've already talked to the senior judge, but we've scheduled, or the chief judge, I should say, but we've already scheduled to meet with the bar. And I don't, this allows them the opportunity to be heard, we share all that we get from them with you, because, I mean, we've, we get feedback saying they are partial to the existing site. And so, with these two, you still got the options, but at least we get to hear them out before you make your final selection of site. So, we are, the mayor has scheduled a meeting with the executive committee, with the full bar, and we're going to have that conversation to at least hear from them.
Well, I think that, and that's good, I mean, you can, you talk to, look, people, you have to adapt to change sometimes, and, you know, if it's in the vicinity, and you create something that has synergy and is coefficient and works with everybody, yeah, it may be, you might have to walk a couple of blocks, you might have to ride a scooter.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but...
Oh, boy.
It's not that, you know, if it's master planned, again, I go back to the footprint and where. If it's master planned and done right, you're not, you're not talking about a major, it's uptown, all of it's uptown, but, you know, you're somewhat, you're still somewhat in the vicinity, but the cost, the magnitude of the cost and the challenge to go back, option two, I think if you really break that down, you're going to find out that's going to be extremely costly and challenging and time-consuming, et cetera. But I will say this too, what we're trying to do, if we want to move this thing along, you need to give that option to the planners and let them work, where you don't need to give two options and start playing with two options.
No, we want to get to one option, the final, whatever it's going to be. I want to move from four to two right now, and then the goal is to go from two to one, and it may be that you start mixing and you ultimately end up with one, but, and we're going to have, I don't really like the idea of spending money on two options to steady them. And so, we got, we need to come to one, but to go from four to two, if we walk out of here today with two, we've accomplished something today.
No, I think I go back to what, sir, you look at option two, maybe you're going to find, you break it all down, you're going to be fine, find out that it's just an overwhelming challenge, so it just, it doesn't make sense from that standpoint.
I got you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Counselor Garrett?
I've already, since I am a lawyer, I've already heard a lot from the lawyers. I'll go and throw this out there, I mean, I understand the concerns about option one, but just for our discussions at the next meeting, the hybrid that has been expressed to me has been demolish the wings, so all the judges can stay in the tower, build something there, and they don't care what we do with the tower. So, I mean, I'm kind of inclined to kind of do a hybrid of that and what Counselor Crabbe had suggested, maybe we get that on the tax rolls and give the tower tower to somebody to develop right next to Judicial Center, and put a new city services building or multiple ones off-site somewhere. But that would be what I've heard from the lawyers.
And I think that's part of the process, is getting the feedback and being able to kind of, kind of see where the, because sometimes when you get suggestions, you really have to dig deeper to get to the real reason for those suggestions, so I appreciate your, appreciate your carrying that water for the attorneys. Counselor Crabbe?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
I was just going to say, and based on what Counselor Garrett just said, see, that, it may be that instead of two or four, we end up with that as the single option, so, but at least move from four to two, and then those two, and then a mix, and then you come up with an option, and that, that could be the option. I don't know.
Council's going to decide, not the administration.
That's right.
So, we're going to listen and do what council's preference is.
I was just going to, I was looking at this recommendation, and on option two, really the only pro, because you can maintain the historic site even with option four, the only pro would be the attorney's offices within close proximity, and, you know, I respect what the attorneys are saying about the demolition and everything, but is it really that far if, if we're moving the site to, what is it, four blocks away, six blocks away to where the jail location is? Is that really a burden to them? And I'm asking you, because you've spoken with Ann Walker.
I know.
I know, but from what they're, what...
I'll tell you that I've heard from them, yes, it's a big issue.
It's a huge issue.
Yep.
Even the four to six blocks.
Yeah, if you're doing trial law, if you're a trial lawyer, you're going across Veterans Parkway on foot is a concern. So, we, and we've talked about different ways to mitigate that, but there'll be a lot of, I think it's going to be good to let them express those thoughts, and then we can kind of look for ways to mitigate it, and if we can, maybe the option stays on. If we can't, then it's up to y'all whether or not we look at another alternative.
Okay.
Counselor Thomas?
One of the things that I would like to see, we have sort of generically said, put it down by the jail. There are a lot of places down by the jail, and I would be interested to see where we're talking about down by the jail specifically. I know that we own property down and around that area, I also know that we don't own a lot of that property down there, and so, and I would have to, you know, submit to somebody who is better, has more knowledge than I do about the size of the footprint, how large is it, what does that mean? If you're talking about a 224,000 square foot building, you know, what does that mean? I also would say that, Mr. City Manager, I'm not sure who came up with four options, I would assume it was somebody on staff, and so, those were not four options that council came up with and approved, and so, I would think that it would be appropriate, if you will, for staff and the administration to come back to us and say, we've looked at all of this, we are now ready to go to the two, to two options. One, and it may be that the option at this point, the two options at this point, is something on the site where it is now, and something at another site, and this is the site we're talking about, this other site, so that we can make some of those kinds of decisions. We don't have to today decide if they're going to be two buildings on whatever site we determine, or four buildings, or whatever, that's not, that's why we're hiring these professionals to make those kinds of recommendations to us. So, I think that we're well on that way, and I'm just ready for you guys to say, here's what we need to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure that Counselor Thomas, I, you know, so if we come back next business meeting, and include a resolution proposing further consideration on two sites, or any combination or of the two options, or something different that council comes up with, but I guess my point is trying to figure out a resolution to remove options one and three, and keep these two, but those, that's not final, those two, it would be or any...
Combination thereof.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we're in the process, according to what you're saying here, of hiring the experts...
Yes.
To tell us what we ought to do. Let's listen to the experts before we make a final decision. I think it is appropriate for you to come back to us and say, we've taken a look at what's here so far, and this is what we're recommending, that we narrow it down a little bit...
Sure.
With the understanding, and council will need to have this understanding, that when we hire these professionals, if they tell us, you cannot do this on that site...
Sure.
For whatever reasons...
Yes.
That we can change our mind.
Okay, so...
It's our prerogative to change our mind.
So, and we can certainly, someone like the smart lawyers will have to word it, you know, properly, but, but, but I guess, the point that I want to get to is removing the two and kind of narrowing our focus, so that we can continue to move towards either a single site or...
So, just remove them, Mr. City Manager, you put them on there, just remove them.
Well, and that's what I was, that's what I was...
For those two, you have a consensus of everybody that I have heard say, remove those two. What happens with those other two is still under discussion.
What you'll probably see is, next time we meet, those two will be gone, and there'll be some modifications based on the information that you have provided and what we've heard today to the remaining two, and then we'll continue to whittle it down.
That's right.
This is, it's literally like a sculpture. We just, it's not so much getting that picture right, it's just chipping away the part that don't look like the picture.
That's right. And so, Mayor, that's well stated, and so, that's what we'll do.
Good.
Okay, Counselor, is that all, ma'am? Counselor Davis?
Yeah, let me, I just want to go back to that, that what I initially said in my, first time I spoke earlier on, I talked about the opportunity of having a revitalization catalyst, okay? Really doing something wonderful in your community, and, look, when you, you've got a chance to do, we've got a chance to do that, and when you really look at this, you look at the various, I guess, trades in respect to what people do, consultants only, you know, the consultant, the judicial consultant that we're hiring deals with space, they're going to deal with space, and they're going to tell you about the rooms and all the rest of stuff. You're going to give them a directive on how you're going to deal with the buildings, whether you're going to go up, or out, or lower, or two, or three, or four, you're given those directions. They're just going to deal with space, interior space. The architects and everything else deal with exteriors, looks, design, all that kind of stuff. It goes back to, you still got to find, you got to find a footprint, you got to find where to do all this, and I keep throwing that master plan out there, and Mayor, I want to go back to, I know that we're talking about all these people being involved, but just because you've got a trade that does business, so to speak, in an area, doesn't mean that you cater to that one group. I mean, this, this is a little more beyond all that, because if it's not done right, you're just going to continue to push a burden onto the taxpayers, we don't need to do that. You got to answer all those questions, so when you have an opportunity to do something good for a community, you look at two, somebody tell me what changes with two. What changes with two other than a new building, and one next to it that's sitting there, you got to figure out what to do with it. All right? And you don't even know what that building's going to look like. Nothing changes, but if you look at a, something new that you can marry with the old that you can renovate, and you look at the developers in town, I said this earlier, you need to go to the developers. You need to, some of these key leaders there invest in big money in our community, okay, and find out what they're doing, and it needs to be master planned with what they're doing, because you've got an opportunity to do something awesome in changing the character of your community. That, to me, is more valuable than just building back as usual and business as usual, nothing changes. So, these are things you got to really think about when, when you're looking at these options, and then I'm just telling you, you're going to find out that, you know, building a building in that one site's going to be very, very costly. And, and look, when it's all finished, we can figure out what to do with that government center. I mean, there's a lot of suggestions, it's not going anywhere, I look at that being on down the line, but let me tell you something, outside the city, CSU, Total Systems, Aflac, tell me who has the capital, tell me who has the money to put in that building and fix it up, like what we're talking about. You got to consider that. I just don't think that anybody's going to come along and just go into a building that's not, is the city going to be responsible for upgrading that and leasing it? Or are you just going to sell it like it is? What they going, what's the next person going to do with it?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money that somebody's got to come up with. I don't think just anybody can put that money in it, there's no developer, you're going to have to have some, a big publicly traded corporation has gotten money that they can use, and I don't know if they're interested in it.
Right.
So, I mean, these are, it's a little beyond just building a building, but when you add all that up, I think it goes to option four, and creating a revitalization catalyst, catalyst that needs to be master planned in our community. Mayor, I hope you would talk to some of these developers and people who are actively involved in looking at that, maybe there's something that, that can be done bigger than what we're even talking about now.
Well, I think certainly there's been a lot of discussion. I know John Redman has spoken very passionately at most of the meetings about the idea of using, and I have actually advocated, all things being equal, that I'd love to see at least one of the buildings put in an area to try to stimulate some economic development. My thoughts have always been that that helps to shift an expense to an investment, because you're going to get some kind of return. You know, how much depends on where and, and what the building, what the building adds to the area. So, I appreciate your comments. Counselor Crabbe?
I'd like to make a recommendation, based on what Walker, what Counselor Garrett said, and then just from looking... said, and then just from looking all of this over, instead of option two and option four, I'd like to recommend we get rid of option two and three, and we consider option one and option four. I think I made it pretty obvious that I, that my vote would go for option four, but having option one left on the table also keeps in motion, if we find out from the legislature that we cannot move the site like what we want to do, then we have that option of remaining in that location with the judicial. It also limits the amount of demolition cost, and it limits the logistics of moving employees and the courts around.
Well, and I tell you, probably the most effective way to get this, because we're all going to have our favorites, and I think the best way to move this forward is let us bring you the recommendations, and then our, your votes around this table will tell us which ones we get rid of, which ones we keep. And that's not the final, final story. We're going to continue to do this, because I like what Counselor Davis is saying. He's got some additions that he's thinking about with regards to option four. There's been some concern about renovating the existing building, where do we put the individuals, a valid concern. There's been questions about, you can't use that site and tear down the tower, and, and logistically you can, it's messy, but you can keep people in the tower until the new building, if you stayed on that site, on the original site was constructed, and then tear down it. So there's a lot of different deviations from just this black and white, or this orange and blue, which I'm not a fan of, but, we're like, hey, go dogs, man, what can I say? No, I'm just kidding. But, but I think what my point is, is that let us bring you our, the recommendations that we have heard the most throughout the community, and then it's up to this body to begin to help us to funnel that down to where we've got a workable, workable plan. And, and it will be, as Counselor Thomas pointed out, once the experts are on board, once the design team's on board, and once the contractor gets on board, they'll begin to flesh out the actual expenses that are going to be going along with each of these different options. Also gives us a chance to try to look at some other properties, I know Counselor Davis has mentioned other properties that we may not currently own, but that might lend themselves to a, a more of a campus style, as he has talked about. This gives us a chance to kind of flesh those, those out as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, we will certainly do that. If there are no questions, we will close this one out, if there are no further questions. Okay? And so we will move to sales tax funding options, and Mayor and Council, this is, I asked staff to put this together, kind of as an education piece, not so much just for City Council, but for those in the audience and watching by television, just so that we know that they have a better understanding of the sales tax that we currently have in Columbus, where it goes, what it's used for, and the various types of funding mechanisms, and what restrictions we have on them. So Deputy City Manager will share that with you and with the public, those watching by television.
So just to start off, Muskogee County's sales tax rate, in the first column are the different types of sales taxes that exist, and the next column shows that current rate. So we currently have 4% state, we have a local option sales tax, which we call a lost, we have a 1% other local option sales tax, which is referred to as an O lost. The school district has an E S P L O S, which is Education Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and that's 1%. And we currently have a T S P L O S, which is a Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. So current rate is 8%. Beginning January 1, it will go to 7%. The school district's E S P L O S ends on June 30th, so the sales tax will actually drop July 1st to 7%. If there's a...
On next year, July 1, next year.
Yes, ma'am. July 1, 2020, thank you. If the S P L O S is successful on November 3rd, that S P L O S will go into effect April 1st of 2021, which we would then, at that point, go back to an 8% sales tax. And December 31 of 2022, the T S P L O S will expire, and at that time, the sales tax would go back to 7%. That would be effective 1-1 of 2023. Just a little history of the sales tax, the O lost and the lost, when they were effective, there's been four educational S P L O S in place, two S P L O S, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and then one T S P L O S. So this gives you those effective dates and the end dates of those different types of S P L O S and lost. The local option sales tax was effective in 1976. It's a permanent 1% sales tax, and it can be utilized really for any operational costs, personnel, operating, or capital, and it is considered to be part of the general fund of the city. The other local option sales tax was effective in 2009. It is, again, a permanent 1% sales tax. It can be used, personnel, operating, or capital, and at that time that it was approved, it was committed 70% to public safety and 30% to infrastructure. It is a part of the general fund, but it's kept segregated for reporting purposes that was reported to council on a monthly basis. A special purpose local option sales tax is up to 1% of a sales tax. It can be used for capital outlay projects only. That's roads, bridges, sidewalks, trails, stormwater, facilities, vehicles, major equipment, those types of projects. It cannot be used for operating expenses or maintenance. There's a lot of questions about S P L O S, why don't you use it for raises, personnel type things? It cannot be used for those types of purposes. It's imposed for a maximum of five years, except if it's imposed by a consolidated government, when a general obligation debt is issued in conjunction with the S P L O S. In that case, the collection ends when the amount of revenue is generated. So there are different provisions for a consolidated government when a GO bond is issued. The education S P L O S is up for, to 1%, can only be used for educational capital outlay projects, it cannot be used for operating and maintenance, and, and those E S P L O S are imposed for a maximum of five years. The transportation special purpose local option sales tax is up to 1%. It's used for transportation capital projects specifically, imposed for a 10-year period. It can be imposed as a regional T S P L O S. We are part of the River Valley region, which is 16 counties. It can also be a single county T S P L O S. That was actually included in legislation after the regional S P L O S, or T S P L O S was voted. That Transportation Investment Act was in 2010, which established the 12 districts throughout the state, and there is a Regional Transportation Roundtable, which made up of elected officials within that region that approves and reviews the project list. The current T S P L O S is a regional T S P L O S. The River Valley, composed of 16 counties, was approved July 31 of 2012, included almost $600 million worth of projects, 23 throughout the region. The total vote, 30,000 yes, 20,000 no. 13 counties approved it, three counties did not approve. 75% of the funds are allocated to projects. They're pay-as-you-go, there's no advance funding related to those projects. As we talked about with the S P L O S, there were projects that were in bands, so they were funded throughout the 10-year period. 25% of the funds is used, it's what's called local discretionary, which we talk about during the budget process each year. This is just so you'll have the information, how those votes were allocated to the different counties, yes and no votes, and those counties where they approved the T S P L O S, and those that did not approve, but you can see it's based on the total of the 16 counties, not individual counties, adopted T S P L O S. 15 of the 16 counties in the River Valley have passed resolutions to support the continuation of a T S P L O S. City Council approved a resolution, a Resolution 159-19 that declined support. Obviously, the discussion that we had previous to this was looking at a S P L O S as opposed to a T S P L O S to meet the needs of the city at this time. But because 15 of those 16 counties in the River Valley have approved a resolution to continue the S P L O S, there will be a roundtable set up as they move forward with that discussion. It's scheduled for September the 4th, so it's coming up in about five weeks. Columbus representatives include the mayor and one counselor. So we just wanted to bring that information to you, and also specifically about the T S P L O S, to let you know that that process for the River Valley has been initiated, and we'll have to participate in that process as well.
And we will bring, we will probably, at the next meeting on the 13th, ask you to vote for a representative of council to, to go to the roundtable on September 4th, Univista. But we'll send you some information out about that, and we'll keep you posted. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I notice here that the S P L O S, it says up to 1% sales tax. Is there a possibility that we coordinate it to where the school and the city government split that one, one cent or 1% instead of it all going one place or another? Have we discussed that?
Well, I think there's multiple answers to that. I think certainly we could ask for one half of a percent through our S P L O S. The challenge there is, the amount of money it would raise would probably be just enough to cover the government center. And as we have heard, and you have heard, from constituents, that there are a lot of infrastructure issues within our county that we desperately need to address. And frankly, I, I mean, I haven't gotten out in front of this thing, but my intention would be to go to the public with, with items that are basic, not build any more stuff, we've got enough stuff. Look at either replacing things that we have that have fallen down around our ears, or shore them up to make them usable for the citizens of this community. I think the challenge in doing that would be that it would not generate, even at, if we get that full penny, it wouldn't generate enough to cover all of the things that we desperately need to do, but it would allow us to, you know, whether it's vehicle purchases, whether it's capital investment in shoring up some of our facilities that are now 28 to 30 years old, whether it's resurfacing roads, whatever it is, it would give us the flexibility to listen to the public and then craft that list, and then go back out to them again, make sure we heard them correct. And I think the, I won't presume to speak for the school board, but I would imagine their concerns would be similar, and that is that it would not truly meet some of the things on their radar screen right now.
So...
I was just going to mention that.
Go ahead.
The other thing that I've passed out to you, it's just a one-page summary of all the sales tax rates throughout the state of Georgia. There are 86 counties within Georgia that have 8%, 67 that have 7%, and there are some, Fulton actually has two counties, whether you're in Atlanta versus not in Atlanta. DeKalb is the same way, they're up at 8.9% in Atlanta. We did check with Phoenix City, within the city limits, they're at 9.5%. Outside the city limits, at 8.75%. So our 7, 8%, where we're currently at, is within the range of the other counties throughout the state of Georgia, and there are some that are up to 9%. There is one at 9% throughout the state. So I just wanted to provide that information to you as far as sales tax throughout the state, as well as in Muskogee County.
And I have to correct something I misspoke on. I was under the impression that we could go after a half a percent, and the school should go, we can't, not unless legislation has changed. So apparently we can't do that. I was under the same impression you were, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if there are no additional questions related to sales tax, that will conclude the presentations on government center planning, government center options, and sales tax funding options, and I hope that the sales tax piece was helpful. I thought it might be helpful for Mayor and Council, and for the public, if we could, if we post this, because it, you know, we get asked the questions all the time, why can't you pay police officers with the T S P L O S? You know, well, there's a reason, so we wanted to just kind of educate people on this.
This will be handy for, I think, all the counselors, keep in their car if they ever have to answer those questions. Counselor Thomas?
I was going to ask Mr. City Manager if we could make sure that all of these PowerPoint presentations are uploaded, so that we can direct citizens that call and ask us questions where they can find them to...
Yes, ma'am.
To help, to clarify. So if we could do that, that would be helpful.
We'll certainly get that done.
Thank you.
Today. And so I've got the HR Director present, we're going to talk about Health and Wellness Center, and we've got some guests here actually with us, Wendy White, Director of Planning Clinical Services, Care ATC, and I was thinking our HR Director was around here somewhere, but I don't see her.
She's coming.
And so...
We met with her yesterday. Here she is.
Our HR Director, Rita Hallwell, will make opening comments and present our guests.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor and Council, we wanted to have our Health and Wellness Center vendor, Care ATC, come and just speak with you briefly and provide a update on the Health and Wellness Center. We met with the Healthcare Task Force, the Council Healthcare Task Force, earlier this year, in February, no, it was April timeframe, and provided a detailed update on the Health and Wellness Center. Specifically, they provided a deep dive of a lot of the outcomes of the Health and Wellness Center, and a lot of the work that has been done there. I'm really excited about what Care ATC has done in terms of guiding us with the assistance of our benefit consultant, Shaw Hankins, in a very positive direction with our employees in terms of preventive health care. So I'm really excited to have her come. I know the hour has gotten late, and she's provided a handout for you, and I know she's going to be brief with that, but I do want you all, and for everybody watching, to get a good analysis of what is actually going on at the Health and Wellness Center, and it's something that we can look at with wide, in terms of the investments that we've made at the Health and Wellness Center. The news is positive, and it continues to be positive, and I'm really excited about what is happening at the Health and Wellness Center. I continue to receive very positive feedback from patients, from those participating in the Health and Wellness Center. The news is very, very good, and I think we have a good partnership with Care ATC, in that when things do arise at the Health and Wellness Center, they really work with us from a partnership standpoint in resolving those issues. So I think that's something that we can feel real, real good about it, but I do, we have Wendy White, Representative with Care ATC, she's going to talk with you in more detail about some of the good things that are happening at the Health and Wellness Center, and she's provided a handout for you today, so I'm really glad to have her here and be able to provide this presentation to you, and certainly she'll be able to answer any questions that you might have as well. Wendy?
Thank you, Rita. As Rita said, I did present the full report in April of 2019 at the Health Care Task Force meeting, so in the interest of time today, I wanted to provide you the full report for anyone who didn't have the benefit of reviewing it previously, but I've flagged just eight pages within the report to save a little bit of time today. within the report to save a little bit of time today. And I think that it provides the greatest highlight of the overall program that Care ATC is administering on behalf of Columbus Consolidated Government. In addition, we recently participated with the city's program to create a video promoting the services of the Health and Wellness Center. And so we're excited to see the many ways that we do our outreach to the patients and that we're able to accomplish a positive message out there regarding the benefits that are available to the patients. Just by way of history, Care ATC became a part of the Health and Wellness Center program in June of 2016. So our first full year of services was in 2017. This is the full year 2018 report of services. And so there is one particular slide in here that maybe appears like there wasn't a whole lot of utilization and activity in 2016, but it's only a partial year. So I just wanted to point that out. There were major plan design changes in 2018, as many of you are aware, that resulted in a larger population being eligible to use the Health and Wellness Center. So if you'll turn in your presentation to the first tab, it is actually the clinic utilization summary, you're able to see that you had a total number of visits in 2018 at the Health and Wellness Center of eight thousand one hundred seventy-seven. Those are healthcare provider visits. Those do not count the individual lab appointments or patients coming in just for their medication refill pickups. This is actual healthcare provider visits. That is a thousand seventy-three more visits than the prior year. So there was definitely an increase. Another area that I wanted to bring to your attention is the overall no-show rate of five percent is significant in that it was a decrease of fifty-eight percent over 2017, where we worked with Ritha's team to develop a no-show policy and get that communicated to the masses and really send the message of the courtesy of canceling your appointment to make that appointment time available to other patients. So we saw a great success with that. Forty-six percent of the visits in 2018 were acute services, things that popped up overnight or needed to be seen within a day or two, and the remainder of the visits are related to chronic condition and preventive care. So the next slide that we have here is the member engagement. Just wanted to highlight, if you look down in the bottom right corner here, you see, it looks like three little pills, lines of pills, patient utilization. So twenty-three percent of the patients who visited the Health and Wellness Center in 2018 had only one visit. Eighteen percent had two, and fifty-nine percent of the patients had three or more visits. The reason that this is impactful is it means that the people who are using the Health and Wellness Center are engaged enough to come back. They're engaging in care, they're engaging in their healthcare, and later in the program, I'll be able to show you some of the outcomes related to those patients who have that continuous engagement with Care ATC. The next tab, actually, I'll have to jump ahead here in the slideshow that's on the screen, is the net promoter score. So Care ATC has worked together with John Redman, the city auditor, to come up with multiple methods of patient feedback opportunities. Patients are currently offered an iPad upon exit of their visit to just answer a few questions regarding their experience, and we're capturing that information. In addition, we send the patients an email asking them a simple question, how likely are you to recommend Care ATC to a family member or a coworker? And then they rate their experience on a scale of one to ten. We had eight hundred eighty-eight total responses in 2018. Seven hundred forty-five patients scored Care ATC a nine or a ten out of ten. So I think that that's very significant. The next page, the next tabbed page relates to the health screenings that we do on an annual basis. And as you are aware, with the health plan changes in 2018, it incentivized the patients to go through the health screening process, whether or not they were utilizing the services of the Health and Wellness Center, and that was tied directly to their cost of premium. With that plan design change, there was a two hundred and sixty-three percent increase in utilization of the health screenings in 2018. We fully expect that number to remain very high and to increase this year as well. We've been working diligently with Ritha's team to plan out those events in the fall and to make it as convenient and accessible to the employees and the spouses as possible. The next slide that I have is three circles here, and it's related to Care ATC risk stratification. So it's the pie charts page. This pie chart page really is, when you just look at it at a glance and you see red, yellow, and green, it doesn't necessarily show a significant impact. Risk stratification comes along after the health screening takes place. We then look at the overall risk of the population, de-identified, of course, but we're able to narrow down then what conditions need the most attention in the Health and Wellness Center, in the services that we're recommending through Shaw Hankins and through Ritha's team. In addition to that, how we administer the individual health coaching program. So I want to draw your attention to the graph that's for 2016 and then the graph that is for 2018. If you look in 2016, when we initially assumed and had then a very small population participating in the health screenings, the high risk of that population was eight point three-three percent, moderate risk sixty point six-eight, and low risk was thirty point nine-eight. By the time we did the risk stratification for the results of last year's health screenings, it resulted in an overall reduction. Your high risk is now at five point four-two percent. Your low risk increased by almost ten percent. Ten percent of the population that continued to do these health screenings had a decrease into the green, meaning that they were no longer at risk for their disease. And I think that that is a very impactful statement. So we're going to move on to the next slide, which far and away, I think, is, for me, if you had to throw one slide on the screen and present it to council, I think this is probably the one that we would want to use. The year-over-year coaching score improvement details at the top of the page. It's the one with the arrows at the top of the page here. We had, the health coaching program went into effect in 2017. We had individual one-to-one health coaching options for patients. They do come into the Health and Wellness Center for their care. They also have the option of doing video-based services if they're at a greater distance or perhaps someone is unable to take the time to come into the Health and Wellness Center. We had, of those returning participants who did the year-over-year coaching services both years, we saw a forty-seven percent improvement in BMI. Weight is the hardest area to have overall improvement, and forty-seven percent of those participants had a decrease in their BMI. Their diabetes results, fifty-eight percent of the participants improved their A1C. Blood pressure, fifty-four percent. HDL cholesterol, which is actually the good cholesterol, thirty-eight percent still improved their results. Fifty-nine percent, though, on the bad cholesterol. I think this is really an impactful slide to show such a significant improvement. You're not just talking about one or two individuals, you're talking about a group of people who's found value in the services and continued to engage in those services. They become the success stories that lead to the next round of patients. So it's a continuous cycle of refinement with their health. They're showing that improvement, but they're also setting a great example to their coworkers and to their spouses. The next slide I have talks a little bit about productivity, and really, it's a hard thing to measure. It's the purple slide here. It's a little bit harder thing to measure, but we estimate across our book of business that with the convenience and the location of the Health and Wellness Center, approximately one hour of work is lost by employees, I'm so sorry to advance the slide. Approximately one hour is lost in their workday by coming over to the Health and Wellness Center for their care. If they have to have that same care on Main Street, they sometimes have to take a half-day if they have to travel outside of the area, even a full day of work off of work in order to obtain those services. So we estimated that as an average of four hours away from work for any Main Street care that is on the traditional health plan. That results, using the average hourly wage of the employees at Columbus Consolidated Government, results in an estimated savings of four hundred forty-two thousand dollars just in lost productivity. And finally, the last item that I wanted to highlight for discussion is the financial health impact slide at the end, and I put that arrow right in the middle of the page to show you, referencing back to the slide that I talked about, the fifty-three percent decrease in blood pressure results for those patients that were engaged. According to these statistics, a twelve-to-thirteen point reduction in systolic blood pressure can reduce heart attack risk by twenty-one percent. In addition to the individual and family devastation, heart attack costs seventy-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one in the first ninety days of care. You had eighty-seven patients who had a decline in their point reduction of twelve to thirteen percent, which resulted in an overall cost savings of one point four million dollars. So it's difficult to measure these types of savings because the claims are no longer occurring, but I think that it's very impactful to remember that the prevention, the approach to care, increasing the health screenings so that we now can identify the risks of the population and we can begin to target those conditions are all ways that lead to that overall savings in the end. So I really commend Columbus Consolidated Government for your efforts to make improvements to the program, to add services, and to follow the guidance of not only Care ATC but Shaw Hankins in making decisions regarding the benefits. So that concludes my summary of the services. We do have the full report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have related to the Health and Wellness Center.
Doesn't appear to be any, but thank you for what you do. This is great news. I mean, it's great news, obviously, from a cost containment standpoint, but even more than that, it's great news because we're, through y'all, are innovating in ways to keep our employees healthy and prolong their time with their families, let them lead better lives, and the fact that they're accepting of this and taking advantage of this is just outstanding. So thank you for your efforts. And Ritha, thank you and what your team has done today.
Thank you for your time.
And so thank you as well. And Mayor and Council, we want to continue to provide updates to you regarding the Health and Wellness Center. It's, the mayor has said that it's great for our employees and for this government, and we see over the years that we've operated the Health and Wellness Center, the savings to the government and taxpayers as a result. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The final update, Mayor and Council, is the Muscogee County Jail maintenance. You keep hearing, we had lower water pressure this weekend. Columbus Water Works, they were doing some work, and we've had shower issues and floor issues and just generator issues and different things with the jail, and we kind of just kind of wanted to update you on what's going on at the jail. And Director Pat Beigler is here to do that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to give you some background, of course, the jail was built in two stages, one part of the building in eighty-four and the other part in two thousand and two. Altogether, we're looking at about a hundred and seventy-two thousand square foot. We, as you know, I came and did a report card, I've done, we've done an assessment of buildings, and the jail building has assessed at a D for the entire building. And that means it's got some system failures, more than one system failure going on. We've now started evaluating each of the different systems within the building. This is a sample because the jail is one of the first we did. The AC system actually has twenty-seven units total in that building and two chillers. And I would, because of the R22 issues, I would rate that definitely as an F. They're all older, they all have problems. The roof is about a B. We keep a close eye on that, and we haven't been having any major issues. The generator, brand new, it was completed last month and is fully functioning and doing well. The facade of the building, we have some bricks that are failing, and we've had that, engineering has done an evaluation of that, and it's in an area where the public is not threatened, but we're keeping an eye on that, too. Plumbing and piping is starting to show some issues, that's an F. Electrical, not bad. The systems are starting to get overloaded because, as you know, we keep adding all kinds of things that need to be electric, we need electric for. We give that a C at this time. The interior finishes, the inmates are pretty rough on the building, those constantly need to be worked on, and we do that, but I would give that an F, too. The heating is all-electric, and at some point, we're not having major problems, but as you know, it's expensive and it's tricky, and at some point, we need to look at replacing that. We've done some work on the hot water tanks for the jail, but we have two very large stainless steel tanks for the inmate showers, et cetera, hot water, and those are both starting to show some minor leaks, so we're going to have to look closely at that. And the elevators are functioning well, they're ugly, but they are functioning well, so I would give that a C. Just to put things in focus, facilities management has about twenty-four people who actually turn wrenches for all the six to seven hundred occupied buildings we have. We actually have four people assigned to the jail full-time, a supervisor who is also a craftsman and does a lot of work. He's not just a supervisor. HVAC, electric, and a plumber. And the plumber's position is one of the three vacancies we have right now out of the four that we have for the city. MCP only has one permanent person, and after we finish looking at the jail, we need to start looking at MCP because it's starting to age and show some of its some wear and tear. And as you know, we've got four people in the government center and not a plumber, unfortunately, but we do keep four people over there full-time. Recent issues, we've had a number of them. The low water pressure was actually a Water Works, water main break issue. They were still working on it yesterday. The air conditioner, we've been very concerned about. The main part of the building, there are four very large units, and it reaches, has reached the point now where the compressors, one or two, go down every summer. We've had one down this summer, and luckily, we were able to rebuild and replace one of, on one of the four units, the compressor. They've been rebuilt twelve to fourteen, fifteen times, and we're running out of luck. Let's just say that, we're running out of luck with those. As I briefed you prior, we have R22 in most of the AC units, many of them in the city, two hundred and eighty-one, I think, included in that were all of the air conditioners at the jail. They all have R22, and that is a chunk of money. We'll be using some of our facilities, infrastructure money to take care of some of those, and we've already replaced three or four around the city. We've had issues with hot water and the laundry, those issues have been taken care of. We've had issues with the kitchen floor, and that has been replaced. We have had major, they have had major issues with the showers leaking and not being properly sealed. That project is going on right now and has been funded. And we had a couple of electrical issues that generally had to do with the work we were doing on the generator replacement, and those were planned shutdowns, but they still disrupt life if you don't have as much electric as you generally need. Current projects, the showers are funded through the CIP, engineering is working this project. The generator replacement just went in last month. You approved that in the budget a year or two ago. In our facilities, infrastructure funding for this year, we identified four smaller air conditioning units that were leaking sufficiently that we needed to go ahead, and we'll be with replacement, and we'll be starting those in early September. That's going to be about a hundred and twenty thou out of our infrastructure funds. And then the four large units are the ones that are of most concern. We've got a design underway using facility infrastructure funding. We will be getting a design back in early to mid-August. This will require that we shut down the air conditioner through the winter months and This will require that we shut down the air conditioner through the winter months, and for that reason, timing is getting to be very critical. Estimated cost is $1 million, and finance is looking at funding right now. So we'll keep moving forward with that.
Excuse me, Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Beigler, you said the generator was, has just been replaced in last month, but that it was authorized some time ago?
Yes.
What was the holdup?
Going through the procurement, the design process, procurement process, the installation process, and they had to build it. So it's been an ongoing project for several months.
Several months?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said several years.
No, I probably misspoke.
Oh, because I was going to say that.
I think it was in last year's budget. Yes, I'm getting nods from there. Sorry, it was in last year's budget, we moved forward with it, and we actually did the final testing and inspection last month.
Well, and let me just say, too, you know, in the government center and the jail, the buildings are old, and when something breaks, it is, it's a real, I'm trying to find the right word, it's a challenge, because we've got to do a search all over the world to find a part, and it's, you know, they don't make the part, and you've got to find someone to design it and create it, and when I hear the stories, I'm baffled, but you just can't call them up and order it. And so that's part of what we, they go through, and so it's a real challenge for a generator or, we had one recently in the government center, they called it a refrigerator or whatever it was, down in-
Cooling tower?
No, down in the basement.
The, I think they referred to it as that. That was the uninterrupted power source ops.
Yes. And they had to build it in Texas, and it took all this time, and then the cost is crazy, and then, I think it was going to be like, I'll just say $60,000 to do it, but they would rent you one until they built one for $30,000. And we said, no, we're going to take our chance, because we knew that, because in other words, we didn't have a backup. It was down, and we didn't have a backup. And so I took the risk of going until they built the new one, and if we had gone down, we would have been shut down, because I was trying to figure, how do you pay $60,000 for them to build this new one, but they'll rent you a temporary one for 30 days for $30,000? And so it's that kind of stuff going on that, some of it you don't know about, that drives staff, maintenance, and people crazy. But I just wanted you to know that they don't make, like, the fan that broke, and you couldn't buy one.
No.
You had to, I don't know what they did, but they had to create something.
Yeah, if we had followed the traditional path, we would have had to have one handmade, piece by piece, and then we would have had to actually get a crane that goes up, take part of the roof off. There isn't even room to remove the fan out of that unit without taking the roof off and craning it out. So our guys got in there, and it took them quite a bit of time, but they were able to reconstruct inside the machinery, the fan that blew up.
So you don't get to hear those stories, because I don't come and tell you about every story like that, but it's, you know, some people ask, what keeps you up at night? The building will keep you up at night. So I just want you to know that. So, but anyway, when you ask that question, it just, I just wanted to share with you that there are some nightmare situations, and the jail is the same way, they just don't manufacture the part anymore. But I just wanted to say that.
Okay, Counselor Davis.
The jail would be ran by the sheriff's office, right?
Correct.
So all that would be in there, but what kind of, in their budget, how much do they, do they line item for these kind of items? I know some of these you can't see, I mean, if it happens, it's just, it's emergency, but how much do they keep on an annual, yearly basis?
It's actually facility maintenance budget, because they maintain all these buildings. We have more buildings, and when you say, however many buildings we have, you're talking about every restroom and a park, standalone rest, just buildings. But to answer his question, would you respond to that about how you maintain all of these buildings? Is it all in your budget?
It's all in our budget.
How much do you earmark for this, for the jail?
We simply don't have that kind of money. It has to come back to council for special funding. I receive-
Are you saying zero?
Zero. If you're talking about everything in the jail, no, we have the four personnel there. There's, I believe-
I'm not talking about labor, I'm talking about just, you know, like a reserve, capital replacement reserve.
There's no capital replacement. I have, this fiscal year, I have $750,000 in infrastructure, facilities infrastructure money, and that has to serve for every single building I have. So generally, I try to-
How many buildings?
I'm sorry?
How many buildings?
Around 650 that are occupied, 1,100 structures that are actually, qualify as buildings.
Well, and I want the finance director to-
Well, and I'm, I'm, I guess, yes, that's how I was fixing to go.
It's what I want her to-
We rely on that reserve so much, and it just goes to- Show that we need to continue building that reserve as much as possible.
Well, and it points to, Counselor, the inability to be proactive. When you don't have money, you're reacting to what breaks rather than being proactive, and it's a matter of funding, but-
No, I know there's a lot of moving parts, but I mean, it just goes to show you that it's just, it's furthermore a reason that you've got to continue to build the fund balance.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, but, you know, yes, sir, but you were making the point about general fund.
Good morning, yes. Also, within Public Works budget in the general fund for other repairs and maintenance, it's about 1.1, almost 1.2 million that's in that repair and maintenance budget that Public Works utilizes for parks and recreation facilities, government buildings, and public safety facilities. And I do believe, and Director Beigler can attest to this, about more than half of that money is utilized on public safety facilities.
Yes, definitely more than half. And if you think about everything from buying toilet paper to light bulbs to what have you, 1.2 million for that many facilities and that larger facilities does not begin to cover all of the needs we have out there.
And so if something broke on the rail wall, you've got to use some of that money-
I would use some of that money, yes.
So someone tells you the rails are broken at this location on the rail wall, well, you know, we don't have a budget, a maintenance budget for rail wall. It comes out of that pot of money. So, you know, we got to go down and repair rails, and so they're stretched with personnel, and they're stretched with maintenance monies to keep these things.
So with the two, that's 1-8, 1-9 total?
Yes.
So you can, for this whole city government, you know, buildings and things, it's a challenge. And, you know, and so I just really wanted to highlight, you know, some things you never, you know, I'll come tell you that they don't make that big fan that's as large as the ceiling is round, and you can't just go and buy it off the shelf, and even if you could buy it, you can't get it out of the building, because it's, the way the building is constructed, you know, you can get up there and break it piece by piece and try and, but you have to have a crane to get a new one up, so it's, they have a lot to deal with. You can continue on, but I just, that's just a, I just wanted to have a commercial break.
In spite of the limited funding, I will say that, you know, facilities tries really, really hard to be as proactive as we can, and since about 2012, in 2012, we didn't even have an inventory, we didn't know what we had. So we spent about three years inventorying all the facilities and trying to put together, and then we followed that with an assessment, which is required, which was required for accreditation, and as we go, we're identifying the R22 units and the roofs that need to be repaired, and we're trying to take care of them before they get too bad and before they do other damage, because if you know, you know if you let things go. If you've got a bad roof and it leaks and leaks and leaks, the damage inside starts to get worse and worse. So you get a lot of deterioration. We have looked closely at the jail. We still have 18 other AC units with R22 coolant that are going to have to be replaced in the next couple of years, I'd say, if that were at all possible. The plumbing is just beginning to experience small leaks, pinhole leaks, and we're starting to have little leaks pop up. I had one in the lobby a couple of weeks ago, and it's, you know, we need to, now we're seeing those signs, we need to evaluate what it's going to take to fix that and put a cost estimate on it, rather than waiting to the point where we have major flooding going on. We have two very large hot water tanks, they're stainless steel, they're starting to leak, and that's going to be about $100,000, and the electric heating needs to be looked at very closely, and we need to do an estimate for that. So we're going to get the costs, we're going to evaluate what needs to be done, we're going to try to prioritize those and keep coming back and talking about what money we need, because it's, some of those just cannot come out of that 750. We only started in Public Works receiving facilities infrastructure money about four years ago, and prior to that, we didn't even have, other than just the routine maintenance money, we did not have anything for projects. So this is allowing us to start taking care of a few things here and there, and it also allows us not to scramble madly for emergency funds if an air conditioning goes down. We just took care of the emergency, the air conditioning at Parks and Rec Office, it failed in, you know, in the middle of April, May, it's hotter than all blazes, we were able to replace that almost immediately. Hey, Good Jim, we're getting ready to replace the air conditioner. So we're utilizing those funds, and we have two or three projects with cooling towers, et cetera, in the government center. We're spending that money on those things. So we're going to keep analyzing, keep putting together lists, and keep talking about costs so that you have a better idea of what we're up against, and you can start looking for what we need to do next to start dealing with some of this. Any questions?
Counselor Davis.
Yeah, Ms. City Manager, we, what are we doing if we know these things, and whether they happen in a year, two, three, you know, they could go out at any time, but are we, if we know that today, are we squirreling, for lack of a better term, squirreling money away in something that would be there to deal with this issue instead of budgeting it every year and it's gone, then we have to go into the fund balance? Are we doing anything like that?
Well, my response is you've got to have something to squirrel away, to squirrel it away.
Well, we have money in the fund balance today, but you'd have to earmark it.
Yes, and we could certainly earmark it, or we can call on the fund balance reserve when an emergency occurs. I think we all know that we have, we've got to build up the fund reserve without OLOS, and so we got to, you know, it used to be no OLOS, and we had 90 days, what have you, and then the OLOS came in, and the OLOS is more than the old, the reserve, and we got to move it back the opposite direction, and that's our goal. Mayor, we've talked about it, and we focused on that, and so-
Maybe that's something y'all can discuss about putting a little bit aside, so when budget time comes, that money's aside, you're not budgeting that money or using it, or it's not going to be used by decisions during the budget process that get us back to 60 days. The challenge has always been, we've always been up against that 60-day mark, and there's really, you know, you shun the thought of having an emergency, where is that going to come from, you know, but there's a little bit of money in the fund balance now, and maybe hopefully later, so maybe start putting some of that aside, but-
Well, but there's a little bit of money in fund balance with reliance on OLOS.
Right, right, well, I'm just talking about things that you know is coming down the road.
Yeah, that's telling us, yeah. But, so, but that's something, that's a conversation or discussion we need to have.
Yep, and I can tell you that it's a, I don't know how much will move the needle, but the focus, one of the big focuses of mine, and I'm going to be presenting to council through the different budgets that we drop in front of you, is to correct that balance, in my opinion. Start getting a greater percentage of the fund balance being reflected in the general fund fund balance than in the OLOS fund balance. And we're starting, and we are going to start, and I welcome any calls or suggestions from council, we're going to start sort of preliminarily, preliminarily, doing our budget in August, and that represents about a four or five-month head start on what we've done in the past. And the specific objective is to do more strategizing, taking a look at some of these challenges that the department has to tell us about every year. I heard about them when I was on council, we just didn't have, we just didn't have enough fingers to plug the holes in the dike. And now, in the mayor's office, I see firsthand the challenges, they still come and ask for them. Pat asked for graballs and trucks, and wasn't doable based on the revenues that we had coming in projected. So they tell us, and we tend to look at them and say, can you make it another year? And the answer is, yeah, as long as everything is smooth and things hold together and we don't, and then, as you pointed out, when there is an unforeseen occurrence, whatever it is, whether it's a natural disaster or whether it's just a large piece of equipment wearing out in one of our facilities, then we scramble.
Well, I'd like to dovetail to another question. Ms. City Attorney, can you, can you do a reserve or a capital replacement with SPOLOs? Can you do that within the-
No, it's only for projects.
Revenue generator?
The money is only for projects that are defined.
For four projects.
They have to be defined as a true capital investment.
Yeah, it would be for maintenance and capital replacement and a reserve to deal with the projects that you build or the projects you have.
Not for maintenance, and cannot.
But what we are going to do, you bring up a good point, we are going to bring to you, ask you to sponsor and support a resolution to send to our legislative delegation. Representative Richard Smith had earlier tried to require that there be a certain percentage of SPOLOs money's earned be set aside for maintenance, which does take legislative approval, because that would, that would be, under current law, that's not allowed. But we're going to ask them to revisit that and allow us to proactively set some of this, if we're awarded SPOLOs, set some of the money aside for maintenance of the things we're revitalizing.
Right. I think that's great, to put on a legislative wish list or whatever, but, I mean, that's, look, that's how it's done in private sector, 3%, 4% on average for reserve, capital replacements, and banks somewhat require that, if not, they do require that. That'd be great if we could do that. I think some of the concerns in the past with the SPOLOs was that you didn't have enough money to maintain the stuff that gets old, and I said that, I said it earlier, stuff deteriorates, you can't stop that, it gets old, and you've got to upgrade it or renovate it and get it back to where it needs to be. Everybody has to do that.
It's no different than your own house. Your house is- Your house is going to get old.
It's just a matter of time, but you can plan and prepare with, you know, and that's what they do in the private sector, is basically what you're talking about, Mayor. I wish the, I hope the state really looks at that, because it would, it would help.
And Mayor, the Finance Director just pointed out, I think Director Beigler pointed out, that the air condition at the jail has to be replaced, and they're going to be doing that fairly soon, but we are going to be coming back to you on the agenda to use two days of reserve. I think it's about a million dollars, because there is no funding, so us to take care of the AC at the jail, and it has to be done. So there again, it's.
Ms. City Attorney, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up. It took me a minute to pull it up, but the first part of the capital outlet project definition talks about land and structures such as would be properly chargeable to a capital asset account and as distinguished from current expenditures and ordinary maintenance. So you can't use it for that. And then they define courthouses and different buildings that you have to use it for.
So it's strictly brick and mortar, but you can use it as a, as a reserve.
Not unless they change the statute to allow some kind of set aside.
All right.
That would be very, with a citizen's perspective, I think that would be very relieving, because that's, you hear that a lot. I mean, that was one of the concerns of the past. You know, you learn from the past, you learn from history. I mean, where we're at today, you hear it, so let's problem solve.
All right. Thank you, sir. Counselor Crabb.
So I want some clarification here. So if, could a SPOLOST pay for the air conditioning systems to be replaced?
No, that would be considered maintenance.
That's considered maintenance?
Yes.
Even if they have to be updated? I mean, because we're, we're updating them from an R-22 to what's common now, and I can't remember what that is. Or is R-22 the updated version?
No, R-22 is the old coolant, and, don't quote me, I think there's a heat exchanger system we'll be going to.
Okay, so, and so by replacing our air conditioning system in the, in the jail, we're spending a million, but in turn, we're probably going to see some savings in our electric bill each month.
We should be seeing some savings, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, that's, it's maintenance that we can't do. And that's what the mayor is talking about. If that happened through legislation, we could do that.
All right.
Ms. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's agenda.
All right. Any other questions or concern by council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know. Say adjourn.
Aye.